Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I'd like to reconvene our meeting. City Clerk, we have roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Bolton.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tempozy.
I'm here.
Mayor Douglas.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Mosher.
Here.
Councilmember Kalnick.
Here.
All present.
Thank you.
And also, I'd like to request that City Clerk Estana Slaz request of permission to be absent pursuant to City Charter 310A. There being no objections, the minute we'll show her permission granted.
Thank you. Next, we are going to have the Pledge Allegiance led by Councilmember Carr. And then, our invocation this evening will be by Janine Johnson of the Huntington Beach Church of Jesus Christ Latter Day Saints and the Member of the Greater Huntington Beach Interfaith Council.
Thank you. Please rise if you're able. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Grateful to be able to offer this tonight. And if you would like to pray in your hearts, the way you have a faith tradition, that would be wonderful. Our dear Father God, we're thankful for this opportunity to meet together in these very favorable circumstances. We pray for blessings to be upon those tonight who would speak, who would share their views with love and respect, and that we would be about doing good in the community always. We're thankful, Father, for all the blessings which we have, and recognize at this time that there are so many throughout the world that are suffering from war, famine, or hate. Whether we pray for them as we are here in such favorable circumstances, and that we should count our blessings, and we're thankful for these things, Father. And I say this in the name of my Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
City Attorney, is there anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing from closed session tonight.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to do the awards and presentations. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here this evening. We have a couple of special awards to give out tonight. Right now, it's my honor to call upon two very special residents from Huntington Harbor. That's Lisa Rudy and Mel Williams. Come on down. You don't even have to give me a price. Just come on down. Just a few months ago, you both helped organize and coordinate a neighborhood watch program. Come on over here with me, if you would. Watch public safety meeting and other crime prevention measures in the Huntington Harbor area. Our Harbor Commission, which falls under the Fire Department's direction, thought you did such an amazing job putting this meeting together that they wanted to specifically thank you and make sure you two were recognized for really rallying the community together. The meeting had over 200 attendees and 900 viewers watching online, which was a huge success in providing a timely and useful information to address the concerns of the residents of Huntington Harbor. And Mel, you created a Crime Watch newsletter. Please tell us about it, and then we'll have Lisa talk.
Yeah, it's a Crime Watch newsletter that just updates our community about things that is going on in the harbor, crime, and what to do to help our police force and support our police to fight crime and kind of push them away from our neighborhood.
And Lisa, I would really love it if you could kind of put into a few words what you did.
Unfortunately, our home was burglarized in February. And at that time, I realized nobody really knew that these burglaries had happened. I was number 11. So, we just literally hit the pavement and started handing out flyers and letting people know that they needed to secure their homes. We have never had to worry about that in the harbor, but times have changed. So, it was just a matter of letting our neighbors, most of them elderly, who don't have access to social media, wanted to make sure they knew.
Well, thank you for taking that on, because both of you served as a positive and enthusiastic role models for others in your selflessness and donation of time, assistance to the city Huntington Beach residents. So, thank you so very much. And I'd like to call up Chief Haberly, so he can say a few words. Here you go, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you again for the incredible work and partnering with our Harbor Commission. We have some of our commissioners here tonight. I know they love to come down and take a photo with all of you. But I think them working together really embodies the One HB spirit, and they found something that together that they could do. And I really want to shout out to Chief Parr and his staff, because they responded quickly and did such a great job of professional service to help assist. I think it was a really successful night of community involvement, the Harbor Commission working with residents, just a great One HB example. So, thank you for that, and thanks for honoring them tonight.
Oh, you bet.
We love honoring our residents, and I get to give you a wonderful certificate. So, I'm going to put this here for right now, and I want to give you, Lisa, the one that has your name on it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And here's Ms. Mel. There you go. And then you're going to have your friends here. Hi.
Hi, friend Mike.
Hello.
See you too. Thank you for coming tonight. Oh, yeah, let's take a photo. Do you want to do a big one? Let's do the long one. Oh, goodbye. We're going to go ahead and have the whole council do it. Josh. All right. Who's the winner here? Right here, right here. All right. Right here.
For those of you who may not know, September is National Service Dog Month. Now, we all love our pets, don't we? And this month is a special month, as we take a minute to acknowledge the National Service Dog Month, which aims to educate our community about the benefits of service dogs and the laws protecting them. I'd like to invite Doreen Mayo of Canon Companions and her puppy Brisket to join me. So cute.
Hi, Brisket. Oh, yes, it's okay. Oh, good boy.
Well, that's an easy way to get to my heart. Thank you. Many, many not of those important or the role service dogs play, but here are a few facts that put them into perspective on how necessary these wonderful animals are. 61 million Americans, 61 American adults have a disability. Eight percent of the American children under the age of 15 have a disability. Canon Companions currently serves people with more than 65 different types of disabilities. Canon Companions has over -- sorry. You got me, kid. You got me. Okay, that's okay. Canon Companions has more than 2,700 active teams throughout the country, and we have placed more than 7,300 teams since their founding in 1975. Gosh, Doreen, you've been busy. All right, well, tell us a little bit more about Canon Companions, and we're so delighted that you came here tonight with your dog. This community loves dogs.
Well, I can tell. I'm going to pet him while you talk. Okay, so my husband, John, over there, who's camera shy, he and I have been raising service dogs for CCI for 18 years. We are co-raising this dog with Denise and Jerry Phillips. Both, we're all from Huntington Beach. And he, let me get his attention here. I have dried liver in my pocket. Good boy. Sit. That's it. That was just a cheerio, though. But anyway, we love working for this organization. It's a great, great organization. If you're in a wheelchair, they have a dog for you. If you're a handicapped child and your, the kids at school are shy about approaching you, there's a dog for you. If you can't hear your doorbell ring, there's a dog for you. If you're a veteran with PTSD, they have a dog for you. So, it's a very well-rounded organization. It's been great. He's actually going through the pre-teen stage now and pulling at the end of his leash, because this is kind of what teenage boys do. But anyway, it's been great raising him. He is sponsored by the Los Angeles Chargers Football Team and Lazy Dog Restaurants. So, he is our first influencer dog. He's actually not behaving right now, but he is our first influencer dog, and he has an Instagram account, ChargersPup, with more than 16,000 followers. So, he's a little spoiled. So, anyway, we just are thrilled to have Huntington Beach support National Service Dog Month. And hey, Brisket, do you want to say thank you? Brisket, hey.
Okay, well, this is wonderful. Everyone, please give Doreen a hand.
And Brisket, too. Why don't you have your husband join us, and we'll get a picture together. Well, we can go over there. We didn't know where, I didn't know where he was, so there you go. How about that? Is that okay? We come over to you? All right.
Love it.
Okay, that's for you. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. You cannot wear my braids. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Doreen. Yeah, let's give Doreen and the dog a hand.
And our next award goes to Sue Rains and Tracy Allen. And the Walmart Team Store continue to support the Huntington Beach Fire Department in their recent donation of $3,000 for the purchase of essential equipment for the Department of Hazard Material and Response Team. Chief, you want to do this? Okay. And Sue, how do you do? Nice to meet you. And Tracy, nice to meet you. Do you want to speak? Let's just speak.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is another kind of that great one example of One HB and the community working together. So, Walmart has been this continued support year after year of supporting our hazmat team. And this year in particular, this team worked on moving from a type 2 to a type 1. It took hazmat in the state, which is really kind of a big deal in the region. And so, we're one of the only type 1 hazmat units in Orange County. And so, as a result, it means we have way more capabilities to respond in Huntington Beach. And this team worked for 18 months with OES, went through extensive auditing, and we got some incredible praise back. But Walmart helped us buy the equipment that we need to invest in to do that moving forward. So, we're really grateful for their continued year-end over support over and over again with the hazmat team and the incredible work they did partnering together to increase our level of service, what we can provide Huntington Beach. And just to kind of work through it, he doesn't know I'm going to do this, so I'm going to embarrass him, but Captain Kissler, one of his innings is pretty amazing. We had obviously our oil spill last year, and this is the captain in charge of hazmat who wrote a grant on his own, went ahead, wrote a grant to write the boom trailer and all of the booms associated with oil spill. He wrote that ahead of time, trained everyone, and then three months later, we had an oil spill. And because of that, we had all of the booms in stock, trained for the Talbot Marsh, the TIC, our Title Inlet Challenge, where we could lay all those out within, Lily, within an hour of finding out. And if he hadn't have had that kind of Nostradamus look, idea of what he did ahead of time, we would have been, you know, we would have had a lot more work to do and maybe some more oil. But so, I just wanted to bring him up and say what an amazing job, and this is all working great. Also, he worked with Public Works and Sean Schop to do that, so I want to make sure Sean Schop really helped support that entire grant and training, so.
Thank you, Chief. Well, we now know, everything that's good, we don't do it alone, right? And I'd like to give this, I know I just have one, you'll have to share it. No, I'm kidding. We'll get another one with your name on it. Do you just want to have to share anything?
No, you're good?
Well, we would just like to thank you guys on behalf of our boss, because he was going to be here, but he couldn't make it, unfortunately. So, we just want to thank you.
Well, please let him know that he has some outstanding employees. We're grateful that you're here tonight. Accept this. And gentlemen, great work. We thank you. So, yes, let's squeeze together here. We'll squeeze right here. All right, squeeze right in. Just turn a little bit like this. Okay. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
So, our last award goes tonight. I'm happy to present the Mayor's Excellent Award to Scott Marsh from our Huntington Beach Police Department. Yes, please, Cap. You know, I don't know if you remember this, but I've always thought you were kind of a special guy. I remember taking the Police Academy class, and you were one of the teachers, and it was such an amazing course. And every time I have the opportunity, I encourage people to do it. Are you still teaching it by chance, or?
No.
Okay, but you have somebody great like you were, right? I'm sure. One of the exciting things about the Mayor's Huntington Beach Excellent Award is that city employees are nominated by their peers who believe that they meet all the criteria: humility, social awareness, passion, exceptionality, integrity, team-oriented. Scott has served with the Huntington Beach PD for over 20 years with honor and distinction. He is currently supervises the General Investigation Unit and incorporation burglary, auto theft, and domestic violence. Scott, I'd like to read a few of what your colleagues said about you. His leadership style encourages teamwork, compassion, innovation, and personal growth. Each day, his employees are empowered to make responsible decisions which directly impact not only the police department as a whole, but more importantly, the community we serve. Another perfect example of Scott's commitment is to the community in his leadership each year in the Special Olympics torch run that comes through Huntington Beach. He organizes and staffs the run with volunteers from the police department and the community. Additionally, Scott and his wife of nearly 25 years, Temri, sorry if I got that wrong, Tim Re, decision to become parents all over again after raising two of their own. They adopted Ellie in 2020, and he's now seven years old, thrives with the love of Scott and Tim Re, show them each day how much they love him. So, it's my great honor to welcome up Chief Parr, so he can add a few things. Are you right behind me? I'm looking up there. Everyone's looking at me.
He hates this, but it is my honor to do this. I got to meet Scott or see him in action a couple of times this year, and one time, we had an individual that came down to the PD, just literally right, right, a couple feet from here. And he was despondent and in significant mental distress. He had a firearm, and he indicated that he wanted to potentially harm himself. Scott is in charge of our crisis negotiation team, and that's a tactical operation, but it's also a crisis negotiation issue. Scott talked to this gentleman for about two hours, and I listened to the interaction, because I was there where he was talking to him, and the empathy, the compassion, the suggestions, the way that he worked with this individual, so that ultimately the individual gave up and that he went into some treatment. It was just, it was amazing for me to watch that. It was amazing for me to see that he was, that he was real and he was genuine in what he was saying. He made a connection with this person. So, that was, that was one time I got to see him. The other time I got to see him in action was, we had a neighborhood watch meeting with Huntington Harbor, and he's in charge of the, one of the burglary teams. So, he went out, and he was so informative. He answered all of their questions, because sometimes you can't recognize him now, because he usually has this huge mustache. But it's gone. He shaved it tonight, I'm pretty sure, but, or today. But he did such a good job of fielding questions, of answering questions, of remembering minute details. It's funny, because people would bring up in these discussions, well, you know, I had a burglar. He'd say, "Yeah, you did, and it happened on a Tuesday night. It was 8:00, and this was that." And they're like, "Yeah, I guess you do know a little bit about this." So, but that's the level of detail he puts into it. So, I just want to say thank you. It's an honor for this to be bestowed upon you, and congratulations.
So, Scott. Wait, you don't get away like that. We got to take your picture. No, no, you want to, Chief, you want to be on the other side?
Yeah.
And counsel, too. All right. Six miles.
It really felt like a little bit of Americana tonight, you know, with the dog, a police officer, couple. Yeah, really good, really good. Okay. So, City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications? Yes, we do. We have two for City Managers' Report. For number 12, I have a PowerPoint presentation entitled Glenn Mar, Frontage Road Improvements, submitted by Sean Crumbry, Director of Public Works. For number 13, I have a PowerPoint presentation entitled Be Well OC in Huntington Beach, The One Year Update, submitted by Marshall Moncrief of Mind OC and Jason Austin, Deputy Director of Homelessness and Behavioral Services. For Consent Calendar number 20, I have, there was an interdepartment communication regarding American Asphalt, American Asphalt South for residential zone slurry maintenance in Maintenance Zone 2 and 5 received from Sean Crumbry, Director of Public Works. And then, for Administrative Item Number 26, I received a PowerPoint presentation entitled Recognition of Michael E. Roger at Senior Center in Central Park and Naming of the Formal Senior Outreach Building at 17th Street Park, submitted by Chris Lama, Director of Community and Library Services. There were also two email communications received regarding the dedication of the Central Hallway at the Senior Center in Central Park. I do have two communications for public hearing, but I'll announce that at the time. Okay, thank you so very much. For public comments, it is pursuant to the Brown Act. The City Council may not enter into discussion at this time individuals who wish to speak to a member of the council on any item not on the agenda may consider setting up an appointment, an individual appointment, by contacting the council administrative assistant at 714-536-5553. Those wishing to provide a comment or agendized or non-agendized items may do so either in person by filling out a request to speak form or via Zoom webinar by computer or phone. Zoom webinar participants wishing to speak will be provided a 15-minute window to select the raised hand feature in the webinar control section. All speakers are encouraged, but not required, to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless the volume of speaker warrants reducing the time. City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comments? Yes, we do. We have 24 signed up. I'm going to call the first 12. Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmember Peterson, Dan Pantano, David Garofalo, Michael Van Voorhees, Scott Field, Joe Carcio, Dennis Bauer, Pam Free, Tim Geddis, Patricia Taylor, Kathy Carrick, and Dino Ferraro.
Go ahead, Mr. Peterson.
Well, thank you. Today, I am here on behalf of Congresswoman Steele. She asked me to come down and present to Michael Gates something that she read into the Congressional Record. And, Mr. Gates, you can come down here and get this, but this is what she said. Madam Speaker, I rise today to recognize one of my constituents and a dedicated public servant for his efforts to protect taxpayers in his own community. Since 1915, sorry, since 2015, Michael Gates has served as an independently elected Huntington Beach City Attorney. He has been effective advocating for law enforcement and working to keep citizens of Huntington Beach safe and leading the charge to fight local crime during COVID-19 pandemic as Governor Newsom enacted restrictions. During COVID-19 pandemic, as Governor Newsom enacted restrictions, Mr. Gates worked to preserve local control at our world-class beaches. He has upheld the rule of law, pushing back against sanctuary city laws that have made California especially vulnerable in the ongoing border crisis. In all these ways and more, Michael Gates has proved to be a hard-working and effective advocate for the people of Huntington Beach, and for that, I thank him for his service to our community. Signed, Congresswoman Michelle Steele.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Del Glaze and members of the City Council. My name is Mike Van Voorhis. You know, I was up here about 20 minutes ago as part of the certificate to the Huntington Harbor Public Safety folks, and I was here because I am a member of the Huntington Beach Harbor Commission, and it's been my privilege this year to be the chair. However, I'm here tonight to talk to you about representing Sunset Beach as a member of the Sunset Beach Community Association because there's a couple of things going on this week that I wanted to advertise. First of all, in two nights, in this Thursday, we're going to have a City Council and City Attorney Candidates Forum that's going to take place at the Huntington Beach or at the Sunset Beach Community Center on 12th Street, and it's going to start at 7:30. It's, we've done this before. In fact, since our annexation, we've had these candidates forums every two years during the election cycle, although we didn't because of COVID. But five of the seven council members have attended those candidates forums, and I think you'll agree that they were a positive experience for you, and they were certainly very, very informative for the residents that are in attention, in attendance. And I certainly do encourage Huntington Beach residents to please come on Thursday night. Oh, I should also mention, it is going to be a, it's going to be outside, so it should be a warm evening and warm day, but dress accordingly. The second thing that I wanted to talk about was this Saturday, we're going to have a Sunset Beach Chili Cook-Off. It's also going to take place at our community center on 12th Street, and it's going to start at 11 o'clock, 11 to 4:00. We have 10 teams participating and a good band. There'll be beer and wine, and we even have a rumor that Mayor Del Glaze is going to be one of the chili judges. We do encourage people to come there. We, finally, oh, I should also mention that there is a $10 cover charge, but that money goes to a good cause, the Sunset Beach Community Association and the Women's Club, and the Women's Club does provide scholarships to Huntington Beach students. Finally, I wanted to talk about Sunset Beach has an honorary mayor. It's a dog named Diamond. There we go. And she rode in this year's Huntington Beach Fourth of July Parade, and she'll be there this Thursday night at the Candidates Forum. So for any candidates that might be watching right now, I might encourage you to bring a dog treat because who knows, you may end up getting our mayor's endorsement. Thanks a lot.
Excuse me, Mr. Van Voorhis.
Yes.
Will you be Zooming that debate or not? Just checking.
You forget who you're talking to.
I know.
No, it will not.
Not you.
It will not be Zoomed.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for coming tonight. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor and the City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Dan Pantano. I'm a homeowner at the Mobile Home Park called Scandia here in Huntington Beach. This message is from my wife, Gina Alexander, as well, who serves as our HOA Vice President. And our past, in the past, City Huntington Beach has always provided for my family the ability to relax while working hard, to see our family grow in adulthood through very good educations from our family members. They've all found good success and are now beginning to give back to the community. So the next generation continues. It's a good thought. Lately, we've noticed throughout our great city, we're being robbed of the fruit of our lives because big conglomerate investors are buying up all the real estate and making middle-income families become renters, and average people can't compete with that. We are manufactured home residents, and we are asking for more affordable housing. And why aren't these being considered as affordable housing and options? With an RSO, it can be done. And on the side, in my senior years, I'm doing a lot of driving for friends and customers and family. And I recently picked up a gal at the Balboa Bay Club and was bringing her to the airport. And she, after we got well acquainted, I said, so what do you do for a living? She said, well, I'm not a broker, I'm not a real estate agent, but what I do is I find residential homes in the local area for Wall Street conglomerates to come in and outbid whoever is trying to get them. And they'll have 100,000 extra to bid on a property. And that's a difficulty that's presented in our entire community. So rents are rising drastically in our city. You had proposed a subsidy, and we thank you for it, but it's not, it's a little bit short-sighted. For those of us who are here for the long haul, just two years isn't enough. We feel we need to continue our quest for affordable housing. It's very apparent it's not only senior adults, but middle-aged young families trying to get their foot in the door. It's about having to struggle to try to make ends meet. Large conglomerates are sucking us all dry. Please help. The Bible teaches, whatever you do for the least of others, so it shall be done to you. A word back from you through our city's Mobile Home Advisory Board is very necessary. Please don't remain silent on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, City Attorney, City Clerk and Treasurer, good evening. My name is Dave Garafalo, and I want to take just a moment of the precious time at this great podium to say thank you to you, the city, and staff. On behalf of the Greater Huntington Beach Interfaith Council, we had yet another successful blessing of the waves, and this wouldn't happen over the last 12 years if it wasn't for some strategic help from the community in the form of Chris Cole and Molly and Gretchen in Public Works, certainly the lifeguard band, Crew 52, City Electrician, so many people. And of course, at the top of the list is Julie Toledo, who's kind of my right hand in helping get that day through. So about 1,000 people show up every year, and they leave inspired, they leave entertained, and they leave with a smile on their face, basically feeling good about life in this one hour of time we take to celebrate life, our relationship to the water, the nine miles of pristine beach. We try to take this moment every year and remind everybody how precious the water is to our lives. So again, on behalf of the Greater Huntington Beach Interfaith Council, thank you for the city's help in helping us get this through every year. So thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilman. My name is Joe Carcio. General Douglas MacArthur gave his farewell address to the Corps of Cadets at West Point Military Academy. And in his closing statement to the Corps was a famous line that said, old soldiers never die, they just fade away. I lived and I worked in Huntington Beach for over 40 years. I owned a clothing store, two restaurants, coached varsity, baseball and football at Ocean View High School for 18 years, and I was proud to serve this great city as a council member and mayor. I served the county on many boards and commissions and worked for the California State Assembly. I'm here tonight to say goodbye to the city that I love and to thank all the residents who had the faith in me in allowing me to serve this great city. I also want to thank all of the employees, council members, Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department, who make this the most desirable city to live in in all of Southern California. I will miss you all. I'm looking back, and looking back on all we had accomplished in my term, there were many, many that were important, but two stand out that I am most proud of. The 9th Street Park on the beach and the tribute to our service men and women with our Hometown Hero Program. I'm going back to where I was born and raised in New Jersey to be with family and to watch my grandson play college football. It's time to be focused on family, which is so important, as you so well know. So to steal the quote from General Douglas MacArthur with a twist, politicians never die either, they just also fade away. So when it's my time and the good Lord is kind, this great city of Huntington Beach will be the last thing on my mind. Goodbye. God bless you. God bless Huntington Beach, and God bless USA. Thank you very much.
You can fill in another microphone if someone back there could, please. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Scott Field, and I'm running for City Attorney. I'm well-qualified for the job. I have 40 years of experience as a municipal attorney and 25 years working here at the city of Huntington Beach. I left the city because Michael Gates created an hostile work environment throughout the city's attorney's office. All the jobs turned over several times. Two of us fought back, though, and I, we filed an age discrimination case, and it was favorably settled. But that's not why I'm running for City Attorney. I'm running because of the gross corruption and mismanagement revealed in the Richard Watson Gershon Report, which is before you on item number 27. What the report discovered was that Gates violated his ethical obligations to recuse himself from our lawsuit. It was clearly in the city's best interests that Gates recused himself, but he decided it was better in his best interest to participate in the case. Even far worse, Gates signed off on another senior attorney, Brian Williams, illegally going to work for the firm that was defending the case, Greenberg Gross, after the city had already retained Greenberg Gross and Williams had worked out an accommodation with them to pay them additional monies. Even worse, I'm sorry, the report showed that Greenberg Gross was guilty of self-dealing in his arrangement with Mr. Williams. Tonight, the City Council will consider whether to follow up on the recommendations of the Richard Watson Gershon Report to pursue recovery of attorney's fees from Greenberg Gross. That's item number 27 on your agenda. The report demonstrated through compelling evidence that Mr. Gates and his chief assistant, Mike Vigliata, knew about the arrangement between Mr. Williams and Greenberg Gross from the very beginning, but he never told the City Council any of that. The only way the City Council ever learned about that arrangement was in received the Richard Watson Gershon Report.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Next speaker.
The, the only reason.
Next speaker, please. Three minutes is up.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
My name is Dennis Bauer. I'm here representing almost 40,000 veterans and their families in Huntington Beach. We used to have a Memorial Hall on Main Street a long time ago. They tore it down about 1974. On item number 26B is the naming of the Outreach Building at 17th Street Park, and it is my recommendation that it be called Memorial Hall in honor of all the veterans in the city of Huntington Beach and their families. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, next speaker.
I was supposed to give this to...
Oh, he's behind you.
Somebody.
There you go.
Thank you.
Sir.
Good evening. My name is Tom Welch. I'm a 43-year homeowning resident here and a retired military officer. I'm here to speak about item 26 as well. I wanted to bring a couple of pieces of information to you, make sure that you had them. I'm here to share some demographic information about our veteran population in Huntington Beach and prior use of Memorial Hall. Orange County has a veteran population of 108,000. The three cities with the largest veteran populations in Orange County are Huntington Beach, Anaheim, and Santa Ana. Huntington Beach has a veteran population of 10,000, about 10% of the county's veteran population and 5% of Huntington Beach's population. By comparison, Anaheim and Santa Ana have almost twice our population, but only approximately 2% of them are veterans. Our city takes the lead in the county where our active military personnel, veterans, and their families call home. The average family size here is 3.13 individuals per household, and in round numbers, that converts to 32,000 individuals, and that number is 16% of Huntington Beach's current residents. And they're the ones that are impacted by whatever happens to a Huntington Beach veteran, either good or bad. For decades, veterans and their families have given selfless devotion to promote American values and a sense of community in Huntington Beach. Now let's focus for a minute on the hall itself. The hall was a city building from 1930 to 1974. Some of you in the room might have remembered when it came down. I wasn't here quite then. That building, by the wording in the agreement from the city, was named Memorial Hall as a monument to the men and women of Huntington Beach who served in the U.S. Armed Forces during any of its wars. End quote. Today, our local vets are spread through every part of our community, all levels of government, private business, healthcare, emergency response, education, and more. Rededicating a current city building in a similar fashion shows acknowledgement and respect for all those citizens who served our nation. It also acknowledges the great sacrifices made by the Gold Star families as a vital part of our country's military community and history. We offer our strong recommendation to call the center Memorial Hall in tribute to all that our veterans and their families have done for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Speaker.
Hello, I am Pam Free. It has been about a year since the majority of this council voted yes to put the craft fair at Pier Plaza out for proposal. I was the operator of Pier Plaza Art Fair for almost 30 years. Mike Posey stated that goodwill and good reputation do not translate into money for the city. So if this was purely to make money for the city, you have failed. During negotiations with Oliver Chi, I offered to pay an increased fee of $650 and 20%. He never responded. The city wanted the new daily fee to be $1,325 and 20%. Because the rental fee was so high, the only proposal received was from the Downtown Business Improvement District. The bid's proposal was for $1,325 and 20%. Well, of course, after they were awarded the contract, it seems that someone realized, oh, gosh, the bid is a nonprofit, and you only have to pay $600 a day and no percentage. This was obviously pre-planned. So the city is losing the extra money that I, the person with goodwill and good reputation, proposed to pay. If your intent was to hurt me because I am Casey McKean's mother, you failed. I was ready to retire, but I did not due to concern for the artists. I had a full event with 56 artists and a waitlist. I had a full event with 56 artists and a waitlist. The current operators have doubled the vendor fees. If your intent was to put all but approximately 15 of those artists out of work and struggling to support themselves, you have succeeded. Those artists cannot afford the increased fee. That is over 42 people that have lost their income. Do you understand that you are responsible for their hardship? Kim Carr and Natalie Mosher are the downtown bid liaisons. Two council meetings ago, Kim Carr stated that everything was great at the craft fair. Actually, on average, only 30 vendors now participate. Do you consider that great? 40% or more of those vendors sell jewelry. This is allowed because management can't get other vendors. Do you consider that great? Because business has not been good, the management told the vendors that 30% of their merchandise can be commercially made, bought and resold, not made by the artist in the booth, which was never allowed the last 30 years. That puts them in direct competition with the downtown merchants and is a huge breach of their contract. Do you consider that great? The vendors are set up outside the boundary lines every week. Another breach of contract. Do you consider that great? Dan Kelmick's friend, Mr. Bixby, was at my event for days taking photos and reported a code violation claiming we are outside of our boundaries. What Oliver Chi told Mr. Bixby is that those new boundaries are put in place by the fire department and the city to allow us to space the tents apart during COVID so we could safely reopen. Where is Mr. Bixby now? How about another four, how about a four court attempt blowing onto Coast Highway? Is that great or poor management? The increased fees and insurance requirements are keeping first time artists away. Do you consider that great? I hear there is a lack of full-time supervision. Again, do you consider that great?
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff, and guests. My name is Patricia Taylor, and I live in Rancho Huntington Mobile Home Park. In the Daily Pilot mailbag this past Sunday, there was a letter from Tim Geddis that was headed Huntington Beach should look for stronger remedies to protect residents of mobile homes. It referenced the plight of at-risk seniors in the city's mobile home communities, especially those in the several corporate and investor group-owned parks that are most threatened by space rent spiking and other abuses. It concluded that local government should explore other remedies to these arbitrary abuses and predatory park owners until a badly needed Space Rent Stabilization Ordinance, or RSO, can be implemented in 2024. You will remember that the author is the current chair of your Mobile Home Advisory Board, so he knows what he's talking about. The board advised you, the city council, earlier this year to place a carve-out initiative on the November ballot, but unfortunately, you declined to do so. So far, we have seen some action, but precious little which directly addresses this crisis. Even sympathetic council members acknowledge that these half-measures are not enough. They know the council needs to do more. This is what we are waiting for. While the city council has the luxury of deferring until something else comes along, the at-risk park residents do not. Their space rents are going up and up, way above any justifiable amount. We need meaningful action now in addition to the welcome but restrictive rental assistance program to help more at-risk residents. Please use, I'm sorry, we are not whining, we are pleading. Please use the waning weeks of this year to bring new hope and new action to address the dilemma that we are forced to face. Isn't that what representation is all about? Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
My name is Kathy Kerik. On March 22, Catherine Johnson was asked by Chairperson Kathy Shea to apply to one of the vacancies, which has existed since at least 2021 on the Historic Resources Board. Catherine applied on April 5. May 9, she was invited by staff to the 518 meeting to learn more. May 25, she interviewed with council liaison Rhonda Bolton and Kathy Shea. On June 2, she was excited to learn that her name would be placed for approval of her appointment on the upcoming city council agenda for June 7. At that meeting, mysteriously, council chose not to vote on she and the other approved applicant, Austin Edsel. Eric Peterson asked why, and Rhonda Bolton said, "We got an email." The email was from activist Mary Yurashima, basically demanding that the entire process be put on hold. With zero discussion, council voted 6-1 to stop the process. Suspiciously, next day, Ms. Yurashima wrote to Rhonda Bolton, "Thank you for your action last night. I understand you may wish to talk with me. I am very open this Friday, if that works for you." It seems the fix was in. My numerous requests for info have been stonewalled, and now, after literally months of stalling and inaction, Catherine and Austin were just notified that they are being rejected, no reason given, and the seats will remain open. These are the documented facts. So the big question is, why are these two fine young candidates being discriminated against? The answer seems to lie with Mary Yurashima. Her letter was clearly obeyed, and a day later, she herself was soliciting new candidates online. Here's a theory. Over the last six years, Mary Yurashima has obsessively attacked and harassed Catherine Johnson's father online in dozens of communications to the city and in an elaborate, highly falsified presentation to the Orange County Human Relations Committee. If Catherine Johnson is being discriminated against simply because someone does not like her father, as it clearly appears, it is outrageous. To punish someone for the actions of their parents, real or imagined, is both unacceptable and unethical. As to why Austin was rejected, perhaps he was punished for his pro-recall stance. After all, why would those six council people vote so fast with zero discussion? It all seemed to work out in advance. For council to enable this kind of discrimination is beyond unconscionable. It is corrupt. These actions send a chilling message to anybody that wants to serve the city in any kind of capacity. Everybody is affected by this kind of targeted discrimination. The residents of Huntington Beach deserve answers now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Del Glazian, members of the city council. My name is Tim Geddis, and I am an almost 40-year resident of southeast Huntington Beach. As current chair of the city's Mobile Home Advisory Board, I am tasked to look out for the best interests of the mobile home community and to press for positive proposals to help the vulnerable and often preyed upon constituency. I have supported any palliative attempts by the city council to alleviate the pain that various abuses are causing these residents, although they are not curative. My recent letter in the Daily Pilot alluded to this dilemma many are facing. Many are asking, what more can be done? Today, I have been repeatedly reminded that there are seven weeks until the election. This applies to local as well as county and state contests. The common question is, what can candidates do differently and better than their opponents? In Huntington Beach, it is ironic that some are bemoaning the so-called power grab by some of our leaders when they have been launching their own power grab to get things their way. Where does that leave our residents, particularly those who live in mobile home parks? I would ask all of our city council candidates what they would do to address the plight of the homeowners and seniors trapped in an unsustainable economic situation in our mobile home parks. What would they do differently and better? As one mobile home senior put it, "We are not whining, we are pleading." Serving in an elective office is about leading and problem solving. I would invite all of the candidates who have answers to attend the fourth quarter Mobile Home Advisory Board meeting on Monday, October the 24th, and speak in public comments. B8, right next door. The board, the board can then advise the city council of any solutions we hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dino Ferraro. I am the owner and chef of Capone's Italian Cucina and the Black Trumpet Bisero in the city of Huntington Beach for the last 23 years. I have also owned other successful restaurants in town. I have never had any issue with our city, never, not one issue. The reason I come to speak here today is to draw attention to a serious First Amendment right violation. On August 1 of 2022, I partnered up with our elected city attorney, Michael Gates, to have a meet and greet event to discuss our city issues and also support small businesses like my own businesses in our community. Unfortunately, shortly after the event, I received several calls from our city code enforcement office, in particular, Ms. Menendez, complaining to me that I am in violation of city outdoor dining ordinance, even though businesses like mine have had outdoor dining due to COVID for the last two years. In fact, my restaurant neighbors to my right, to my left at Capone's, they also have tables and chairs set up outside. Yet now, suddenly, after I allow political event at Capone's, I am being held in violation of a very program that our city has hosted and encouraged for nearly two years, outdoor dining. I learned that these complaints were coming from our city workers and members of the public because I allowed Mr. Gates to have his political event at my restaurant on August 1. This is a tragedy that the city would engage in selective suppression and punishment of free speech while allowing other neighboring restaurants and downtown restaurants, restaurants all over our town, to have outdoor dining. But Capone's cannot because I had Mr. Gates' event. I'm calling on the city to cease this harassing and punitive activity in violation of my free speech. I will not allow this to continue. Government cannot violate free speech in assembly, including this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty? Do we have more speakers? I'm going to call the last of the speakers. Go ahead. Lisa Ferraro, Jeannie, Jeannie Farrens, Wendy Schwartz, John Buzan, R. Alan Bayliss, Ken Anaway, Fran Varga, Chris Varga, Amory Hansen, Leonie Mulvihill, and Jim Rossman. Could you say the first name one more time? Yes. That was Lisa Ferraro. Okay, great. Please, if you would, come to the microphones.
I can hear you.
Go ahead. Anyone who's ready to speak, go ahead. Thank you. There's another one. There you go. Okay.
Okay. My name is Lisa Ferraro, and my husband is Dino, who just spoke, and we own Capone's Italian Cucina on Beach Boulevard here in Huntington Beach. We've also been living here as residents of Huntington Beach for over 30 years. Like my husband, I am deeply concerned about the city of Huntington Beach's punishment of our free speech through the weaponization of code enforcement. Code enforcement is so desperate now, after hosting Mr. Gates' political event at Capone's on August 1, that the enforcement officers are claiming the outdoor dining is in violation of the ADA when we all know there are multiple paths of travel in and around our restaurant. Not a single person, whether on foot or in wheelchair, has a trouble traversing the area even with the outdoor dining. In addition, we have never had a complaint from anyone citing an inability to get around the outside or inside of our restaurant. Finally, I don't even think city code enforcement has the ability to cite for ADA violations like the ones alleged. Usually, under these circumstances, a complaint would take the form of a civil action brought by someone in the protected class who seeks to redress under the ADA, not city code enforcement. Sorry, I'm nervous. I say this to illustrate the peculiar and suspicious timing of these code enforcement actions and to highlight the great lengths that code enforcement is going to in order to punish me and my husband for our free speech. I wonder how this kind of government activity would hold up in a court on a civil rights case against the city. Governments are not allowed to punish individuals for free speech, period. And our city in Huntington Beach should not punish small businesses, especially when Mr. Gates was undertaking to help and support small businesses by bringing people together in our establishment. Simply put, the city needs to stop punishing us for our exercise of free speech. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name's Alan Bayliss. As a practicing attorney and 50-year-plus resident of Huntington Beach, I believe it's time for a change of leadership in the Huntington Beach City Attorney's Office. On August 5, the OC Register published two statements by Mr. Gates that clearly indicate why he is not the right person for the job. He stated, "As long as the voters will have me, I am happy to continue to represent them." That's not his job. His job is to represent the city. And he continued, "And I think the current system is best for the community, although it, it may not always be best for the city council." He said that he will not do what's best for the city council, who is, he is ethically obligated to work with and advise and represent the city through the city council's authority. Mr. Gates apparently doesn't understand his ethical obligation to represent the city of Huntington Beach and not the voters. In fact, oh, the fact that he did not recuse himself from any and all participation in the employment lawsuit brought against him and the city further calls his ethics into question. Let's move on and elect a new city attorney. Additionally, the OC Register on August 30 quoted Mr. Gates. "On balance, I think it's a far better form of government to have an elected city attorney who is consistently visible and accountable to the public." Gates said, "If the city council were able to hire their own attorneys, the public, public would never even know the names of the, the attorneys or how much money is being spent on those attorneys." That's just a clearly a false statement. Everything that the city does is governed by the Brown Act that ensures that business conducted by the city council is open to public scrutiny. There is no power grab in play here because the city attorney is required by the rules of professional conduct to represent the city as directed by the city council. There is no power to grab. So it's really time for people to understand, and maybe Representative Steele doesn't quite get it either, he's not here to represent the people of the city of Huntington Beach, he's here to represent the city. And if he's not able to do that without inserting his agenda to, into the process, then we need somebody else. And I'm supporting Mr. Scott Fields, or Field, I should say. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Jim Rossman. Thank you, council, for, for hearing me. Jim Rossman, I'm a 43-year resident of Huntington Beach and a 22-year member of the American Legion. I'm here to let you know why I believe the name of the center should be called Memorial Hall. Americans have fought to keep this country free so we could have a meeting like this. Many thousands of Americans fought in wars over the years, the last 200 years, for freedom. Many have given their all. I am a Vietnam- I am a Vietnam veteran. Needless to say, I did not get, and nobody got, a hero's welcome coming home. As we kind of say amongst ourselves, is we paid the price so following veterans could be honored. Uh, we recently had a, a luncheon for our World War II veterans. Four guys showed up. Uh, one of them's 102 years old, uh, the greatest generation. What an honor to be around these guys. And here's some of their stories of what they've done and how they've progressed and kept everything kind of to themselves over the years. You have a park named, uh, Chris Carr Park under Congressional Medal of Honor winner. And I believe an additional honor, all vet, to honor all veterans, naming the building Memorial Hall. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Rossman. Go ahead, Mr. Anaway.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Members of the City Council. My name is Kenny Noway. I'm a 49-year resident of Huntington Beach and also a candidate for city council. I'm here today to report some very disturbing facts that I became aware of over the weekend. The city ordinances regarding the posting of campaign signs are clear. It clearly stated that campaign signs cannot be posted until the 19th. But clearly on the 18th, a number of the candidates posted their signs a day early. Now, in the grand scheme of things, that's not important. But what is important is the betrayal of the public trust. Because those individuals decided that their personal convenience and the ability to get good seats and postings on the signs are more important than complying with the laws of this city. So basically, these individuals broke the law. These things happen, and I've been told can, happens all the time. Well, I've never run for city council before, and I'm saying it shouldn't happen. When this matter was brought to the attention of the city attorney, it was dismissed. That's, I think, a sad commentary on where we're going as a city. I would encourage all of the fellow candidates, and we're all good people, to run on the basis of our merits and our plans for the city and what we can do for the city. And not send minions to send out hit pieces against people. Because the people of this city demand and deserve a clean campaign based upon the facts. I thank you so very much.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Amory.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Mayor. My name is Mr. Amory Hanson, and I am a candidate for councilman in 2022. I rise today, not in my position as the vice chairman of the Huntington Beach Historic Resources Board, but as a concerned citizen to personally support item 26A, the placing of two plaques in memory of Mr. Michael E. Rogers, one at number 1,706 Orange Avenue and one at number 18,041 Golden West Street. While it is unfortunate that the city council became the first city council in Huntington Beach's history to vote to erase a name from a park, I believe that these plaques are an excellent way to restore some degree of Mr. Rogers' legacy to Huntington Beach. In addition, Mr. Rogers' legacy can now be honored, both at the site he helped create and worked at for so long, and at the site now serving the population he advocated for the most seniors. The plaques also ensure Mr. Rogers' president's presence, he's not president yet, is ubiquitous at both locations rather than limited to one specific room. Huntington Beach can honor the legacy of Mr. Rogers in additional ways. I encourage Mr. Slama and the Community Services Department to consider organizing an event, perhaps at either 1,706 Orange Avenue or 18,041 Golden West Street, to reflect on Mr. Rogers' legacy sometime near the dedication of Huntington Beach's 79th Park. I also encourage those Huntingtonians who wish to memorialize Mr. Rogers to honor him by taking the time to reach out to the important seniors in your families and lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Barbara. My name is Wendy Schwartz, and I'm here, thanks to you for putting us on the calendar to follow up on the Glenmar Wall project. Thanks for having us back, and I appreciate you keeping tabs on this so another five years does not go by. I was able to talk to the Public Works Department after I was here last time, and it, it seems as though the project got dropped mainly because of some confusion with the COVID situation where a lot of people got laid off and, and things like that. So the project's moving again. Thanks to all of you. Thank you so much. My community thanks you also. But when it was picked back up, uh, there was a lot of confusion because a, a new project manager has been assigned to it. I believe that you're on, that they're on the agenda for number 12 today, and one of the things that they're going to talk about is, uh, they no longer have the funds. The funds were originally, uh, through a CIP approved with Denny Bacon when I was working with Denny on the project five years ago. And it was all worked out very well to where, um, originally, we were going to do $50,000 a year, um, to progress it. The community was willing to wait however long it took to get it done, as long as it was moving forward. And when Denny no longer had the project, uh, it was proposed that now there isn't enough money to do it with the CIP that was originally awarded to it, so they want to change the materials and change it to the lodgepole materials that is in the parks and by the beach and, you know, the city, uh, Public Works Department's familiar with working with that. They're unaware of all the, the, um, work that was put in with our community with over 12, um, meetings at my house with, like I said, 200 people, where we picked out the, the, um, materials. And they were specifically designed for, for different reasons. Number one was because, like I'd said before, um, our community is kind of, the way that it's laid out, our streets head right into the main street, and there's no walls around it, so we have dogs that get killed every year. So we chose to, to put the, um, treks down at the bottom in space to where the animals can't get out. We also designed it where it's the treks deck to where the top of it, the kids can't walk along it, which is what causes them to break as well. And I understand that the cost of these materials were a little bit more, but in the long run, to replace them again, I don't think it would cost more. So it, there was a lot of thought and a lot of work, and, you know, Denny was a big part of it, and it was in agreement, and now everything, um, is being proposed differently because there isn't, um, enough funds. What I want to propose is if there isn't enough funds again, um, then maybe we could do it in phases. Our, our community is open to do one section with the amount that we have, and next year, another section, another section. If it takes another five years to get it done right, we're open to that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead, next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor DeLgey's and City Council. My name is Fran Varga. I reside on 18th Street in Huntington Beach, and I am here to make a comment regarding administrative item 26B, uh, the naming of the old outreach building at the new 17th Street Park. I wish to express my support and ask you to approve the recommendation made by Community and Library Services Commission to formally name the senior outreach building Memorial Community Hall. The name will honor the original historic locale of American Legion Post 133, which was known as Memorial Hall, and it also acknowledges the public nature of the facility and the efforts by our community to save the park from development and encroachment. It is, in fact, a shared facility. The name Memorial Community Hall would also honor others who have served our community, aside from veterans, with bravery and honorary, such as Police Officer Nicholas Vella, who served our community for 18 years and tragically perished in the line of duty earlier this year. The restoration of the park is proceeding along ahead of schedule, and the site is now really looking more like a park than it has in about 100 years. This project is a major accomplishment for our city and the community, and it represents the culmination of years of work bringing together multitude of interests and groups. And in fact, the naming alone has taken about a year of going back and forth through the Community Services Commission. It was already rejected once, the, the name of the center by this council, uh, about three months ago, and, uh, they're coming back with this option. Uh, I understand the veterans would like to just claim it and call it Memorial Hall, and, uh, they're asking you to consider a different name than what's been proposed by the commission and by city staff. Personally, I like the name as it is, Memorial Community Hall, but if you want to maybe switch something around, if you're considering other options, you could say, uh, Community Memorial Hall, to keep the Memorial Hall part intact, maybe better. Anyway, um, we asked that, uh, for this, that we hope that this is, in fact, the last vote on this topic, and we hope that the next time we're together, it's going to be at the ribbon cutting ceremony for the park. And we thank you for your consideration of our community park.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Chris Varga, and I'm here also to speak on, uh, agenda item 26. And I would like to support the naming proposed by the Community and Library Service Commissions, naming the building located at 17th Street Park Memorial Community Hall. This ties in the old American Legion Post 133 meeting location, which was once called Memorial Hall, and ties in community. This, this park, this struggle has been going on for six years for this park. You know, once a previous city council was on the verge of selling that land and building houses down there. We finally have got a park, and now we've got a name for the park, and the final thing is getting a name for the building. And we had a charrettes meeting where all these people came together from the community to decide what to do with that area. And one of the things was, it was a community. It was not, everybody didn't come there together and say, "We're building a veterans' center." Now, there's a veterans' outreach facility at the library. It's not a veterans' facility. The Legion's going to use it, I'm fine with that, but it is a community building, so we need to keep, so I'm fine with keeping Memorial, but add, be sure to have the community in there so everybody knows that it is more than just a veterans' hall. Because, you know, a lot of people could use that facility, and if it's kind of branded as a veterans' hall, it would, uh, just, you know, take away from that. People might not be as reluctant to go in there. I would also like to support the naming of the, uh, uh, the central park area in the hallway for Michael E. Rogers. And, um, I'm looking forward to the groundbreaking coming up, hopefully soon. The green grass is in. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Leonie Mulvahill. On July 6th of this year, this city council released a report prepared by Richard Swatson and Gershon, and that report is the subject of your agenda item 27 tonight, where you'll be making some recommendations possibly or not. But since July 6th, as both a citizen of Huntington Beach and a municipal lawyer for over 25 years, I am struck by the fact that the city council's report has been assailed to by the city attorney by way of multiple statements blasted by the city attorney on social media. The ensuing commentary, which has been encouraged by the city attorney, in my opinion, has become a distraction to the election this year, especially as to the applications of the state bar rules of professional conduct as described in the report, which is rules 1.7, 1.11, and 1.13. These rules of professional conduct, which apply to attorneys, address conflicts of interest, special conflicts of interest that apply to government officials, and the special rules that apply to organizations as clients. Because the state bar is the final arbiter as to the implementation of these rules, I did file a complaint with the state bar and now look forward to the state bar's determination, whatever it may be, with the intent that this council and the city attorney can then permanently move on from this distraction and refocus their time and effort on improving the lives of the residents of Huntington Beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers, um, city clerk? I was just going to make a last call for Jeannie Farins and John Buzan, if you're here. All right, here they come. No, guess not, maybe not. Okay, we'll move on. I have two, two callers on. Patty, um, Officer Bobby is. Roger Noor and Brian Costa.
Hello, my name is Roger Noor, City Council members. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight about this, but for agenda item number 11, where you guys are mayor delegates to present the August Mayor's HB, uh, Excellence Award to Sergeant Scott Marsh from the HPPD, you guys got to tell us who's going to get the excellence award, because Scott Marsh definitely does not deserve it. And there's reasons for me to say that. And there, I don't know how we were allowed, when are we allowed to make any comments in regards to these things, so that way you guys don't be, you guys aren't embarrassed in regards to who you guys are giving excellence awards to. I mean, it's automatic, and then everybody poses with them and everything else. His detectives, it took 23 days. I showed them pictures. I, I got a company car at $70,000 Tesla, and this girl keyed the car, all over $12,000 worth of damage. His detectives, his elite detectives, Ricky Gonzalez, Gonzalez, doesn't do anything for 23 days. Then after that, tells the person, after they lied to him that said, they said that they didn't have, I, any, that, uh, that she didn't do it, then they showed pictures because I, I had seven cameras taking pictures the whole time and moving, uh, video, and she denied it until they showed the pictures. So she lied to the, uh, to law enforcement. Nothing happened to her. Nothing happened to her whatsoever. I'm driving around with a car that has $12,000 worth of keyed marks. I asked Ricky to, to look at the car. He refused to. Then again, he's so busy, the detective is, he, even though he only works three days a week, okay, and gets paid 20, $220,000 a year. When I told, when I complained to him, to Scott Marsh, he said, "Wait a minute." It took him, it only took him 23 days, it took 23 days to come over, and he didn't do anything. The only thing I got was $287 from this girl. Nothing happened to her, right? And so she didn't go to jail. She accused my son of something that he had to pay a hun, I had to pay a $100,000 bail to get him out, so that way he can see the evidence against him from, from the public pretender, and there was none. So when the public defender, uh, pretender, I told the DA, they colluded, they remanded his sentence, and, I mean, they remanded his bail, and they threw him in with a, uh, with a, uh, what is it, the?
Oh, a straitjacket.
A straitjacket. And they kept him in a straitjacket, they hid him, the, the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department hid him in the Twin Towers for 10 days. Even the supervisor for the public, uh, for the public pretender, uh, the alternate public pretender said that the sheriff's department is hiding my son. This is the same place that, that our chief, the wonderful chief, that you guys went through all this stuff to get him because he's such an elite, where, where there is the sheriff's department that has 13, the 13.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Would that be me?
Yes.
Okay, um, in support of my friend's disappointing experience with the Huntington Beach Police Department, I'm sure you've heard this before, we've been here before, um, I am just like so shocked and like I cannot understand how a person who admits a crime, it's on camera, and the police department comes along and does nothing, no arrests. I just spoke to a gentleman who was a professional jockey. He told me he was arrested in your town, like about a, I don't know, maybe two, three weeks ago, for smoking on the beach. Okay? Now, if that's arrestable offense, you're not, you're not to tell me that a $10,000 vandalism on a, on a person's private car is not arrestable offense? And you city council people, I know, are not the police department, but you city council people sit there and you are in the same, basically, beds as the police department. Where's the accountability? I, I, I just cannot understand it. This has to be an arrestable offense. Now, your chief, who just came in because we had a little powwow outside, uh, just before we came back in, and he said that he wasn't, I think, uh, the chief at the time. So he kind of like, you know, understood it, but didn't really seem to be very empathetic with the situation. So when you guys, to support my friends also giving out a lot of these awards, and you don't know the backstories and all. you don't know the backstories on all of these people that work for your city, is pretty appalling. So I'm, I'm just basically gonna conclude that power to the people, knowledge is power, and free speech lives.
Thank you. Uh, city clerk? That will go to on people online. Ada Hand. Can you unmute?
Uh, my name is Ada Hand, I live in Delmar Estate, a family-owned mobile home park. I want to educate tonight on something called vacancy control in mobile home parks. Some owners of manufactured housing communities are concerned that under an RSO, they could never raise rents for two buyer, for new buyers. RSO communities may fall under one of two types, those with vacancy control and those with vacancy decontrol. Vacancy decontrol means only that the current, means only the current tenant is protected when there's an RSO. New buyers can have higher rents of any amount by the park owner. Vacancy control means there are some restrictions of higher rents for new buyers. I looked at a chart of 107 RSO communities in the state. Forty of them are vacancy decontrol, meaning the park owner can raise the rent to any amount when there's a new buyer. Sixty of them are under vacancy control, meaning they're limited in how much the park owner can raise the rents. Language negotiated by the city park owners and park residents in most of those 107 RSO communities has some percentage of increase that is allowed under an RSO. The most frequent increase is 10%. So in other words, residents can increase the rents in those parks for new buyers by 10%. Some allow only 5%, others say they cannot charge more than the average rent for new buyers, a few are 15 and a few are 20%. So it's kind of all over the board, but 10% was the most frequent. The rent before, which is defined in RSO language, sets a base rent for each unit, taking into consideration factors like rent charges prior to the RSO, the landlords' operating and maintenance expenses, inflation, and housing supply and demand. These kinds of things tell me that resident, that park owners are going to get some help to have their rents be more in line with what they want. Base rents may be raised under an RSO for increased inflation or an increase in operating expenses. The rent board would look at the park owner's financials to determine how much that park owner can raise his rents. Of course, they don't want to show you their financials, they don't want you seeing the tons of money they're making. So, RSOs do legitimately have some limitations on how often the rents can be raised for new buyers, or if they can be raised at all, or what percentage they can come up. So, we have heard some park owners telling us, "I'm sorry, I don't want a, um, RSO, because I'll never be allowed to increase my rents for new buyers." That is simply not true. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Plum?
Good evening, Mayor Del Glaze, awesome city council, wonderful city staff and concerned citizens. My name is Ally Plum, and I am a immobile homeowner. And I will try and keep this message short and sweet, but I would also follow my friend Ada, because I do want to give you a little bit of information. The Dictionary of Real Estate Appraisal, Fifth Edition, defines the term "market" as "a set of arrangements in which many buyers and sellers are brought together through the price mechanism." Also contained therein is the following definition of the term "market rent." The most profitable, excuse me, the most probable rent that a property, property should bring in, uh, in a competitive and open market, reflecting all conditions and restrictions of the lease agreement, including permitted uses, use restrictions, terms, concessions, renewal and purchase options, and tenant improvements. There is thus no question that market rent is a legitimate real estate appraisal term. But, a close look at the above definition shows why it should not be used to test whether mobile home rents should be increased. The definition speaks of a competitive and open market. The mobile home housing market in most metropolitan areas, including Huntington Beach, is anything but competitive and open. Mobile homes and manufactured homes are immobile, and there are limited parts to which to place them, in which to place them. Homeowners, homeowners cannot afford to move their homes, and even if a place could be found for them, and are thus forced to either pay higher rents, or sell or abandon their homes if the rents become unaffordable. In essence, mobile home residents live in a captive marketplace, a virtual monopoly, where park owners control the market. Where the market is controlled by one party, the so-called market rents that result from that control are not derived from true competition, but instead are set according to what the controlling, controlling party desires. So thus, I end my speech. Thank you very much for your attention. Oh, wait, one more thing, I'm so sorry. I wanted to remind everyone, all concerned people with mobile home issues, there is a Mobile Home Advisory Board meeting, October 24th, 5:00 PM, Monday, in City Hall, Room B8. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Plum. Go ahead. City clerk? That, that is the last of the calls that came in on the, within the 15-minute window. Well, good then, we'll, we'll move on then. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, let's see. We have city managers, oh no, whoa, 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 council committees, appointments and liaison reports, AB 1234. Let's see who raised their hand first. Mr. Kelmick?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two, um, short committee reports. On, uh, September 15th, the Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee met, um, where we discussed, uh, a lot of the items that council had discussed to try to firm up some better policy. Uh, staff presented us with some affordable housing overlay maps that Councilmember Carr brought up, uh, that showed very limited overlay between, um, like, I think 20-something properties between, um, uh, the housing element overlay and, and the cannabis, potential cannabis sites. So, it's a good exercise to make sure that we weren't gonna run afoul of that. Um, and, um, so yeah, so we, uh, discussed having a cannabis community open house, which will be sometime in October, staff's working on that. Um, that'll be on a Saturday, you know, midday. Um, and then, um, discussing land use recommendations and bifurcating the process between land use and policies. Um, and over the next couple of months, bringing those forward to council. Um, and then today, I attended the Orange County Transportation Authority, OCTA's Citizens' Advisory Committee Bike and Pedestrian Subcommittee, which I've now served on for, feels like 12 years.
No, you were in fifth grade.
Yeah, it's been a while. Um, and one of the things that was brought up, uh, was, uh, you know, obviously a discussion of e-bikes, which we have here quite a bit, and what some of the other cities are doing. And Laguna Niguel, uh, has partnered with the Capo School District, uh, to do licensing program for, for kids. And so you have to take a class, and it gets a sticker, uh, that puts it on your bike, uh, and if you don't have that sticker when you ride into school, your bike gets confiscated. So, um, it's a interesting program to help safety, to make sure you have sat through a safety class. Um, they're working on the, what if your younger sibling inherits your e-bike, and so they're, they may re-license regularly, but, uh, a bill actually just passed, or was signed last week, that prohibits licensing of bicycles, um, by municipalities, um, which I, was discriminatory back in the day. Um, so they've removed that piece, um, and then it does, it has created some, uh, issues with, where we can regulate Level 3 bikes, uh, as well. So I think staff will, uh, be presenting that going forward as part of a mobility plan, but, uh, it was just kind of an interesting solve, um, as other cities start to contend. And OCTA is gonna be putting together some policies for cities on e-bikes. They've hired a consultant, and, so they're gonna have safe, they're shooting a safety video this month as well, and so hopefully we can partner with our school districts to keep our kids safe, and, you know, hopefully get that out on social media to help move our adults that are riding 3 to a bike. Thank you.
Well, I can't keep a secret, so, um, because I serve on OCTA, I'm, this question came up, and I just wanted to share, because, uh, people are looking for the, you know, some of the different, um, committees we serve on, and they put an excellent, um, outline together, and it, most of it did come from what you described, Laguna Niguel and Capo Beach. I think it's a brilliant idea, especially if the state doesn't want us to, or it's pushing back, let me say that. So, um, you know, management will review it and get it out. Um, I, I think it would be a really good way to protect, um, our residents. Uh, every place I've gone to, and the, I mean, I don't know, if I've, if I'm with somebody more than a minute or two, I'm hearing about e-bikes. So, just want you to know, in the background, it's being worked on. Okay, um, Ms. Bolton?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of, uh, things to report, so in addition to, um, working on the cannabis, um, issues with Mr. Kelmick, uh, the Human Relations Committee met on, uh, September 13th, and, um, one of the things that was discussed was the upcoming, um, hate crimes report update that was released by Orange County Human Relations a couple of days later. And it, so a couple of interesting statistics from that. Um, they reported that for Orange County, the number of, um, hate crimes and hate incidents reported to police was up by 165%. And, um, HPPD, um, provides figures on a monthly basis to the committee, and for the year, uh, 2021, there was a 175% increase in reported hate crimes. We don't track hate incidents just yet, I don't think. Um, so, significant increase over, um, the course of just one year. So one of the things that the committee is working on, and this, um, request, I think, came last year from Mayor Carr, was to, um, develop some recommendations for how the city can respond, and perhaps, uh, offer some type of support to the folks who are victims of hate crimes and hate incidents. So I look forward to receiving that, uh, from the committee, once they've completed that. Um, let's see, that's it, that's all. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Bolton. Uh, next would be, um, Ms. Moser?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I have a number of things. Um, I attended the League of California Cities Conference, um, in Long Beach. Uh, while there, I was elected to represent the First District Board of Directors for the 2022-23 Orange County Division for the League of California Cities. Um, I attended multiple different sessions, but ones specifically that were of note were sustainability and climate action plans, ones with regards to youth engagement programs, including a summer at City Hall, a large-scale internship program, civic, or, excuse me, civil civic engagement, and also a discussion of Prop 47 and conversations about efforts at the state level to make possible changes in the law. On the 12th, I attended the City School District's meeting with Mayor Del Glaze, um, and really, Oceanview School District, Huntington Beach City School District, the High School District, and the colleges, um, as well as a, a large number of city staff. Things that were discussed included e-bikes, education, enforcement, and safety. Of course, our PD was also there, and fire. Things like what the licensing discussion was, that were also talked about. Um, and I'm excited about the, um, working with PD and the schools, there seems to be a really great relationship. Um, we also discussed biking infrastructure and the mobility plan, specifically with regards to safety and, um, the ability to get to school safely. Um, we also discussed mental health, specifically about connections with BeWell OC, um, in, in Huntington Beach, and also the fact that they have been going out to the different schools. One thing of note with regards to that is, we kind of assumed, um, when the school districts were thanking us for the programs, um, we assumed that the people who were being served by those at the schools were the students, and the, um, High School District in particular mentioned it was actually also the staff, teachers, and parents who were being assisted. So I thought that that was interesting. Um, and finally, and I'll let Mayor Del Glaze talk more to this, but we also just did discuss our Junior Citizens Academy. I attended the Youth Board Meeting yesterday. I also, as part of the Downtown Urbic redesign ad hoc, participated in our downtown walkabout on Main Street as part of the, um, Downtown Dreamin' redesign, um, outreach and input with our residents. Their Studio 111, residents, business owners, and property owners, um, did a walk throughout Main Street, um, looking at different, um, design palettes and getting, uh, input, um, looking at just, um, what's possible down there. There's been many of those, um, well, one other walkabout and other listening sessions. The upcoming listening sessions are on our SurfCityBreak.com website, but they include Monday, September 26th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Main Street Library, um, for the final story session. Uh, does require pre-registration, I do encourage you to attend. Um, and then finally, the Downtown Dreamin' Input Recap Meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 3rd, from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Main Street Library, which also requires, um, an RSCP, but the, I think a Zoom link might be coming for that one as well, for more people to be able to participate. I attended the Human Relations Committee meeting, and Rhonda already went over that. Um, so thank you very much for mentioning those, um, concerns about the hate crime report. I do, um, encourage people to look at the, um, hate crime report. You can go to ochumanrelations.org/hatecrime for more information. And then finally, um, as a member of the Homeless Task Force, liaison for, for the task force, I had the, um, pleasure to do a couple of things, including, uh, attend the Project Hope Alliance Open House, um, that took place, they are currently, it's a nonprofit, working with some of our schools, um, especially with youth who are homeless or at risk of being homeless, we're hoping to do more with them in the future. And then finally, um, I had the great opportunity to do some Home Key outreach, um, with Jason Austin, our director, Deputy Director of Homelessness and Behavioral Services, and also with some of the other team members. Um, you know, we did that because, um, we are opening up our Home Key, um, on property on Beach Boulevard, near the Navigation Center, in early October, and, um, I got to go with them on the day where they were reaching out to people who were on the streets, um, for the first time to let them know about this, um, this property. And it was really, um, it was a reminder that our people who are on our streets, who are homeless, are not a homogenous group, they all have very different stories. Um, we were able to go to three different locations. That day, we signed up, uh, nine different people to possibly, um, move into the, um, Project Home Key site. Um, I will say that it was overall just an incredible experience, um, being able to, to serve and help, and also watch, um, Virginia Clara, also really in Romero, do such great work, along with Jason Austin. I did want to make one other comment, though, with regards to my experience that day. Um, while we were in Central Park at the very end of our experience, um, a community member, uh, walked by and, uh, stopped us. She was with, um, what I think is her grandchild, and I asked if I was Natalie Moser. Uh, when I confirmed, she replied, "I hate you. You are destroying our community. I will never vote for you. You're awful." Um, and to be honest, it was like, the worst parts was speaking about hate coming up from our digital forums, kind of coming to life from the screen. You know, I knew that we were out there doing good work, and I know not everybody's going to agree with each other. Um, that's okay, we don't have to like everybody, um, but I think that we can do better than that. We can treat each other better, with more decorum, we can talk about issues without hating a person, especially somebody who is trying to serve the community. So with that, I challenge community members, when you feel hate towards another community member, or anybody, I challenge you to invite them into a conversation. For prospective leaders, who I believe are helping to create challenges like this, I ask you, and I challenge you, to aspire to work to cultivate community, and not fear and division. And finally, um, in that vein, I would like to say that the city too, has accepted this challenge, and is presently working on programs that help bridge that separation, to help us further engage with each other, and to practice being neighbors, better neighbors, in a better and more constructive way. And then, in closing, um, I'll read a quote. "I'm convinced that men hate each other because they fear each other. They fear each other because they don't know each other. And they don't know each other because they don't communicate with each other. And they don't communicate with each other because they are separated from each other." Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Carr?
You really expect me to follow that?
No, I don't.
Yes, I know. I, I just feel like, drop the mic. Um, but I do want to sing your praises, as, you know, you just sort of glossed over the fact that you got elected to just be our District 1 representative at the League of California Cities, um, to serve on the executive board, and so, I am so proud of you, and I'm, I know, um, I've had this seat, and so now, I feel fantastic that you're taking it over to represent our city, and, um, to serve, and, and to, you know, we all know and love you here in Huntington Beach, but this is a great opportunity now for other cities to recognize what a talent we have here with Councilmember Natalie Moser. Um, I just wanted to touch real quickly about the conference, because, um, this council was gracious, and it appointed me to serve as the voting member at the conference last week. There was, um, one issue that we voted on, which was just basically updating the bylaws, no big deal, but, one of the things that, um, Cal Cities really advocates for is local control. And so there was an emergency resolution that was presented on the floor, and was, um, successful to get enough signatures to bring forward- and was successful to get enough signatures to bring forward an opportunity for CalCities to support a ballot measure in 2024 for more local control. And so CalCities is considering this very seriously. And so the entire board voted to go ahead and to look at this potential ballot measure for 2024, and has now kicked it over to the Housing Committee and the Environmental Quality Committee. And then it will come back to the board. So Natalie, you'll have an opportunity to take a look at that next year. But other than that, I just wanted to report on those two items. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Actually, I'm gonna, I've got a few to report on. But before I do that, Ms. Moser, I really personally want to thank you as the mayor for your courage to speak out. You know, we're often in those vulnerable situations. I've had them, people come up, and when they ask you, if you're Natalie Moser, what are you gonna do? Say no? I mean, so you find out yes, or you find out no. Sometimes you've got a 50-50 chance of them liking you, or you don't. But at the end of the day, you do provide the service that you were elected to do. You do it with great heart. And I wish more people could understand really what's being done. I mean, even a resident was, you know, attacking Sergeant Scott. They don't know each other. There's no knowing. And it's so easy to spew hate, especially when they don't know. So don't let it stop you. I know it won't. I couldn't be more proud of the progress that we've made in this community regarding homelessness, of course, under Justin's, or Jason's leadership. But Natalie, you're truly a contribution for all those things. We wouldn't be where we are today without it. So please take that with you from tonight. The other items I was just gonna mention is, I was confused by the end of the month. I've got so much written here. But I do want to just say that we did have the fortune to have, the city of Huntington Beach actually won an award. I don't know that I'm excited about telling you about the award, but it went to the Orange County Tax Event, Roses and Radishes. Anyway, roses are when the city does something wonderful, radishes, not so much. And actually, we didn't really get the award, but we received it on behalf of Poseidon. Big radish, really big one. I should have brought it with me. I forgot to. But it's a smiling radish. And I say that only because 20 years of time and investment, they just wanted to let them know they understood that. Also, if you didn't see our parade on Friday, the ISA is in town. That's the International Surfing Association. And 51 countries are participating. And if you haven't seen the parade, or if you haven't watched it possibly on Channel 3, the thing that's so remarkable about it, it's almost like having a little mini Olympics right here in town, right on Mayberry Street, which is Main Street here in Huntington Beach. It was wonderful. And I want you to know that when the country of Ukraine came through, everybody stood up and gave them a standing ovation. It was really moving. The other item that I wanted to bring to your attention is, let's see, just give me a second here. I should have written these in a written-down piece here. But, okay, I guess that's good for right now. I know I'm missing something, but I'll circle around maybe at the end. Let's see. Did you want to speak again? Oh, okay, your name's here, so I'll, okay. Anybody else? We're good? All right. City Managers Report. Please introduce your item.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna yield my time to Sean Crumbie.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Del Glaze and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present an update on the Glenmar Frontage Improvements Project. So we have a few slides that we'll go through that talk about history, what's out there right now in the area, and our current project, and some options moving forward. So a little bit of project history. The Glenmar Track lies between Magnolia Street and Bouchard Street to the east and west, and between Yorktown Avenue and Adams Avenue to the north and south. For much of this area, the tract has frontage roads that parallel the arterial streets. Between those frontage roads and the arterial streets themselves lie a frontage median. The red lines around the map that's shown on this slide show where those frontage medians lie. Excuse me. So the frontage medians have outlived their useful life, and they're definitely in need of investment. So we have a few pictures that will show that also. So with the current condition, the age of the medians and the current condition, residents have requested repair and investment into those frontage medians. The median has five locations where there are tract entries into the neighborhood. So the city began by improving those tract entries. The city budgeted $50,000 in consecutive years, so that would have been three years ago and two years ago. And with those funds, we're able to completely reconstruct three of the tract entries, partially complete a fourth, but not yet start a fifth. So to this point, there's been a total investment of $100,000. So here's a few pictures of what the frontage medians look like. You can see both the frontage road and the arterial streets in these slides. Definitely, the columns are showing their age. Many of the wooden planks are broken, and some are even missing. You can see in the pictures, some of them are not there. The top-right picture shows one of the tract entries that was completed and the new treatments that we have there. So in fiscal year 21-22, so that was last year, the city budgeted $500,000 to accelerate getting this project completed. But the cost of the tract entries that we'd done and projections across the rest of the project, it was thought that that would be enough funding to complete the project. Those funds are still available and have not been spent or moved or touched to this point. The project is fully designed with the aesthetic look that you saw on those tract entries. But before the project was ready to go out to bid, the costs were looked at. And with all of the escalation that's happened through COVID for the past year and a half, we've discovered that we believe there to be a budget shortfall of approximately $450,000. So with every capital project, if a shortfall is discovered, city staff is going to work hard to try to bring the project in under budget or to meet our budget. So we have a few options going forward with the project to try to accomplish that. One option is to bid out the project as-is, currently designed, and see where the bids come in at. That could be presented to the City Council for award. But if we were gonna push forward, there would be a request for funding to bridge that gap at whatever it is, whether it's the anticipated amount or not. One idea that the staff has and would like to move forward with is to transition the project to the lodge pole. What we'd like to do is finish the tract entries, and we think it'd be an attractive look to finish it with the theme that you see there. But in between the tract entries, complete the project with a lodge pole. That has been communicated to the residents and has been met with resistance, in large part, as was mentioned earlier tonight, about the idea of a pet barrier or pet protection. But I would say a couple of things about that. First off, if there were any meetings that were held in terms of scoping, there was no staff present and/or participated in any of those to talk about maintenance or costs or any of those sorts of things. And the fence is never designed to be a barrier for pets. So here's a photo of lodge pole. We've had a lot of success with the lodge pole. It's been placed on the bluff top very positively. It's been used in other frontage median areas and around Central Park. We believe that making this change could save $100,000 off of the project. An option that we'd recommend going forward would be to utilize the phasing that was mentioned earlier today and stretch the budget as far as we can to get as much of the project as we possibly can done now. And then in future capital programs next year, the remainder of the project would be presented and compete with all of the other items within the capital program for funding. And if approved by council, we could finish it up next year. So that concludes the brief staff presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Oh, Mr. Kelmick.
So it doubled in two years?
Yes. We've seen construction cost escalation go up between 30% and 50%. Maybe there were, it was a little bit underestimated in the original proposals. I would say that the tract entries were done. The lion's share of it was done, it was managed by Danny Bacon. And it was, a lot of it was done by staff on weekends, overtime, by our maintenance and operations staff. The areas of responsibility that have, when the reorganization happened, the areas of responsibility for Danny Bacon have doubled in terms of he has taken on fleet maintenance, beach maintenance, building operations, maintenance. And so the staff doesn't have the ability to continue to do it that way. And so the model has changed towards handing the project to a project manager and bidding through traditional public contract code.
Got it. And I guess just a 30,000-foot question is like, why is the city own this type of frontier? Like, this seems like a very expensive, very maintenance thing. It seems like an HOA thing. Why is this, historically, why is the city owned this?
So this is public right-of-way that lies between two streets that the city owns. Very common situation. We have these on Edwards, on Hile, on other streets. And it, you know, I could guess that it probably was due to street widening from multiple streets that happen in different directions. But it's always been city property. It's never been, I don't even know if there is an HOA out there to take over.
I doubt it would be. It just seems like a really expensive thing. Okay, so then what's the ask tonight?
So the recommendation of the staff is to push forward with the project, substituting the lodge pole in, in the areas between the tract entries, to finish the tract entries so that they all match. The staff would like to stain the lodge pole so that it matches in color to what was already placed out and pushed forward and deliver as much of the project as possible.
Mr. Crumbie, I have a question. The resident that came to the podium, I was just curious, did you discuss what she had, the residents had recommended about, you know, doing a certain amount and putting that aside, and then maybe waiting till another year? Is that complicated?
So ultimately, it's the same strategy or idea. The really only difference is whether we continue with the Trex theme throughout 100% of the area. And really, what that boils down to is money upfront for construction this year and next year. And then it's hard to say about the maintenance costs going forward, whether that would be an increased cost. We haven't had that sort of a situation in place long enough to know.
The material that's out there now is, what did you call it, the long pole?
So currently, these pictures show what's out there now. The original fence had a, I think it's a treated lumber. And it was replaced in sections with a Trex-type material.
Trex-type, okay, so.
And so we, the other option would be a lodge pole like we've done.
So the lodge pole, I would think, would weather better?
That's also a treated lumber, so I think it would rather, lodge poles are gonna need maintenance also. They're not gonna be maintenance-free.
Okay. Mr. Zalinka? I'm sorry, Dan, I thought you were.
Mayor, I just wanted to remind us that this is a report out, right? Not seeking direction.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else want to make any comments?
I mean, I was just gonna finish my comment, which was.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I think the lodge pole is great for the beach, but I think there's an aesthetic here, and I think I wouldn't want to change that. I think that what they've got there is, looks great. I think the Trex seems to hold up in a lot of other situations, and especially down even closer to the beach. So I would be, I would not want to put lodge pole back up there. I think it would kind of look weird. And these folks have been living with this forever, like, let's do it, right? I mean, one of our policy goals, and I think Councilmember Moser brought an item forward a while ago, is let's work on beautifying some of our streets. And I think if we're gonna budget it over a couple of years, I think that $100,000 starts to become a rounding error a bit. So that would be my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Kelmick. Go ahead, Ms. Moser.
Yeah, I would agree with Councilmember Kelmick. Specifically, it makes me think about all the different walls that you drive by that are all different. And, you know, I think it's, since this was already started, and what they have looks good. I know it hasn't been determined yet what the Trex maintenance will be, but I'm a little bit familiar with that. I imagine it might be similar to the lodge pole, or maybe even a little bit better. But either way, I think that the difference in dollar amount isn't huge. And more than anything, I think that the arterial beautification and just, you know, the hodgepodge look that we have throughout many parts of the city, I think we wouldn't want to contribute to that with something new.
Go ahead, Ms. Carr.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo my fellow councilmembers' comments, and particularly since we're not talking about a huge difference here. I mean, I'm looking if, if I'm missing it, they're both 950. Is that a typo? I mean, option one is the budget is 950. Option two, pretty much the same. But what, more than anything that I was thinking about is one of the reasons this prior design didn't work is because people were walking on it and breaking the poles. And I feel like the lodge pole is just more of the same. So that could be an issue. And I did like the suggestion that was brought forward about maybe doing it in phases. If we couldn't do it all at once, maybe there's an opportunity to take care of the most broken areas, do those first, and then continue to go forward. Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to speak? Okay, we're done here then. Well, thank you for the report. And right now, then we'll move on to review the first year of operations for BeWell OC and Huntington Beach Mobile Crisis Response Program. I can't see who's coming. Is that Marshall? Mr. Moncrief is coming to the microphone. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I think there's a clicker. Thanks very much. Okay, great. Hi, Mayor Del Glaze and City Council. We've talked about moving through this update relatively quickly, just sensitive to everybody's time. At the same time, I do want to take a minute and not move quickly to really ground in gratitude to you, Mayor, to every single member of the council, to our city manager. Thank you to Jason Austin, who's been a tremendous partner, and to Chief Habberly and Chief Para. I've been working in mental health in Orange County for over 20 years. And most of us get into this for very personal reasons, and the same is for me. And so every day, I get calls on my cellphone from community members. And you find that mental health is the great equalizer. It's a non-discriminating challenge. So the calls that come through are from our community members with the most resources and the most connections. Calls come through from the most vulnerable of our community and the most in need, and everybody in between, and every single day. And so these problems have been around for some time. But COVID really brought it to the forefront and made it indisputable that it impacts all of us. And I'm a resident here in Huntington Beach. And so we've been in this community for nearly 60 years. And my kids are now growing up in this community, are in the schools. And so I'm super grateful on a personal level of the leadership of Huntington Beach, that our community is leading the charge in what a community can do to address the needs of every single person in the community. So thank you for that. This update is about the mobile program that this city kicked off. And this is a picture of the van that we did together, this city together, and sitting in front of our library. And it's a cool shot because it's a representation of the way in which this program has folded into the fabric of the community. And it's just been tremendous. Let me see if I can get this clicker going. Hold on a minute. Okay, good. Thanks. I want to take just a quick minute and ground in context. Some of you guys know this, and maybe some of you don't. And so this will be relatively brief, but grounded in context. In the community of Orange County broadly, and specifically in Huntington Beach, as many cities across Orange County and across the country, the system of mental health looks a lot like the left-hand side. I don't know how well you can read the little words and the drifty little flags, but what those little flags represent. but what those little flags represent are every sector of our community. So law enforcement, the justice system, housing, education, the faith community, they're all represented there. Every single one of those sectors is increasingly impacted by growing demand for mental health support. And every one of those sectors is working their tails off to try to address it. The challenge is, we're doing that in acupuncture-like pokes. It's fragmented. And so we're working hard, but we're working in a disintegrated way. The result is increased crises. We have designed the system to lean on law enforcement and EMS as our first point of contact, our first point of response. It's an unfair burden to them. And as somebody who's worked in Orange County's hospitals for the last 20 years, the default location are the hospital ERs and the jails. Straining those systems and leaving our community members underserved or poorly served or not served. So what we're trying to do with the Be Well effort is take the left side of the screen and make it look like the right side of the screen. So that all of us are coming together in a more unified effort to wrap support around the whole community regardless of their socioeconomic status, regardless of their insurance status, and regardless of their clinical need, whether that's mild or severe. That's the effort. So it's kind of like the stone soup of building a mental health program. Everybody chip in and we got to get this done together because the problem's too big to do it alone. So that's what we're about in Be Well. And Huntington Beach has jumped in on that to show what a city's leadership looks like. So this is the celebration of the first city in Orange County kicking off this mobile program, which meets a major gap in the mental health continuum across Orange County. And in fact, this city is ahead of the curve and predicting the future of what a mental health service looks like. Because at the federal level, this is starting to be recognized. In fact, the entire state of Oregon was just funded by CMS to expand this type of program across the state. And so we're here, leading what this thing looks like at a city level to further stimulate that level of support. So way to go, Huntington Beach. Now I'm going to get quickly into describing just briefly what this program is. Most of you know it, but some people in the audience in the community might not, so I'll keep it tight. But this is in support of law enforcement and EMS. Thank you again to Chiefs Para and Habberly. This is in deference to their leadership, and so we take orders and direction from them. This is in support of the community in need, again, across socioeconomic strata. And this really is a demonstration of health equity that often is an academic term without substance. We're living it here in this city. The way this thing works is oftentimes when someone's in distress for a mental health challenge or a substance use challenge or some kind of social services-related need, they call 911 or the non-emergency line of their community. That goes to Huntington Beach Dispatch Team. And historically, like most cities, the dispatch team has had three tools. Send out a law enforcement vehicle, a fire truck, or, or an ambulance. And they've been on the front line of dealing with these mental health issues. What we're doing is working together to create a fourth response, to increase that response system, to optimize the deployment of law enforcement and EMS. So that we're going out on these mental health calls as often as possible to relieve law enforcement and EMS, to be available for the more acute, urgent crises of the community. That takes a lot of trust for law enforcement and EMS to invite a partner in to work alongside them. And that's where my gratitude comes from, with the two chiefs and their respective teams, and Jason and the city manager, to give us the vote of confidence, to give this thing a shot. And so far, it looks to be working. And I wanted to share what the data is coming out for this program. One other thing to give a picture of what this thing looks like, and then we'll get into the numbers. On the upper left-hand side, these are all staged photos, but this is, this captures the real-life situations. Upper left, we are in the parks of Huntington Beach, dealing with people that are struggling with homelessness. But in the upper right, we're in the living rooms of nearly every housed community in Huntington Beach. Down on the left-hand corner, oftentimes, the intervention is a friendly gesture, a point of connection and to stabilize a crisis and get someone connected to the resources they need. Sometimes that includes transporting the person to a facility-based care environment. Sometimes that's the Be Well Clinic in the city of Orange. And sometimes those are other lower-level facility-based services, depending on what the person needs. So what you've helped create is the most agile, responsive program in Orange County. My picture and my little video is blocking the number. But the total contacts since we've launched this program is pushing up towards 3,000. Thank you, magic of Zoom. It's 2,700 people have been served by this thing. This month, 324. And so we're out making an impact in high volume. We expect those numbers to continue to increase as the program gets more understood by the community and as we get better and better in working with our partnership. This is a really awesome statistic. The average response time is 16 minutes. And the average time on scene is close to 50, pushing up on an hour. The importance of that is because this thing is sent out at a local level, because this city is leading it, we're able to get to the person in need really, really quickly. When you have a monolithic county-wide program, some of the services there are necessary, to be sure. But the response time necessarily slugs because you got to respond to 34 different cities. Here, we're right here for Huntington Beach. The time on scene is super critical because all of those minutes are not being spent by Chief Habberly and Chief Para's team when they could be spent with a lower-level resource like this, making them available to the more acute needs of the community. 67% of the calls do not require a co-response. That's really critical. Again, we're, the aim is to relieve law enforcement and EMS. This is a support service in support of them as well as community. We think that number will go up higher as we continue getting our rhythm together and, and building trust and building capability. 85% of the time, we're stabilizing the crisis in community. So this is not about stuffing people in a van and shipping them off somewhere. This is about meeting the needs of the human being where they are, in their culture, in their environment, and getting connected in the lowest, most non-intrusive way possible. We, we knew that this, this service would be responsive in this way. This is better than expected with respect to stabilization of crises in the moment. Interestingly, this thing splits about in half with regards to housed versus unhoused individuals. So you've helped create a service that really, truly is available to everybody, regardless of whether they're unsheltered or, or living in a home. This is a little montage that we put together of some of the ways in which this shows up in the city of Huntington Beach. Up in the upper left, that's actually Councilwoman Moser with, with the team and engaging a couple of community members. We were still actively distancing and masking at that time. And so you'll see the nature of where we're positioned. But as you kind of go along the, the shot, we're in a shopping center. We're coming up on the corner of where somebody created an encampment outside of a, of a community home. We're behind a baseball field, working with somebody who happened to be in crisis there. And I love the lower right-hand picture too, because it shows the reciprocal relationship that's underway, where law enforcement is also teaching us about the community needs and how we need to show up to be the best service for them. And so this has just been an absolute tremendous collaboration. And we're grateful to you for, for making it happen. And we're grateful for the community for embracing it. And I think that's, that's where it is. So lessons learned and, and looking ahead, I guess to close out there, we have learned a lot about the way in which we need to be responsive to community, the way in which we need to continue cultivating relationships in the community so we keep that 85% number high. We can stabilize in community to the degree we're connected to community supports and services. So we have to keep generating those relationships. Jason Austin has been tremendous. He's an enormous talent for you. I don't know that the community knows fully his experience, but we kind of got the Mickey Mantle of mental health and homeless services coming in here. And so he's been terrific in encouraging us to be proactive in meeting with the business community, the school community, and just keep being visible and relevant. And that's been really great coaching, and we're taking that into this next year. And I'm available to any questions.
I don't know that I have a question so much as a statement. I will say that since our paths crossed and you brought this amazing program to the city of Huntington Beach, I will, I've lived here 50 years. I know many people over the years that have had situations where they needed some help. It's not homelessness necessarily. Wealthy, not wealthy, it doesn't really matter. There was seriously no place to bring somebody to get mental health services, at least that we were unaware of nearby and without making a big whoop-de-doo about it all. The other thing that I think people don't realize is the need that regular people have. This is, again, you're reaching out not only to the homeless. I've been so impressed lately about the response from teachers. And it, it kind of made me happy and it made me afraid at the same time. Not, I don't know if afraid is the right word, but unsettled because their responsibility has only grown and they are burnt out, many of them. And so I didn't say students, I said there's teachers. You know, that's what we're starting to see as well. And I think you bring up a good point about cultivating the relationship. Because you know what? I can remember meeting you a number of years ago when we were, we were just talking about removing this stigma. Okay? Who could even talk about it? And now I have police officers telling me, wow, what a great program this is. You know, I don't know how to do that. They are trained, they know how to do it. And I think it brings the best out. And it really shows, and this is what I would, I guess what I'd like to really get across to our residents, is that your community really does care. I mean, we are doing this so we can bring assistance and solutions to our residents who need, who have needs. Because mental health services, this is just the beginning, right? I mean, I only see it going one way because it was pretty bad. So I'm sure there's other people who want to speak. But I personally want to thank you, Mr. Moncrief, for not only coming here and talking about this tonight, but you should be very, very proud to be in partnership with the city of Huntington Beach. And with Jason, we are very grateful, Jason Austin, that you are here in this community. You've made it better. So let me have Ms. Carr speak.
Thank you. And I, I appreciate, as you were saying, you know, you're so grateful to the city council. We're so grateful to you. And I think that we are very, very lucky in that we got to be the test pilot for this truly innovative and forward-thinking program. And I just had a quick question. How many people now have taken Huntington Beach's lead and have implemented their own Project Hope program?
We're, because of Huntington Beach, we're active now in five cities. The only reason it's limited to five is we didn't want to get over our skis in, in launching this thing. And, and at this point, there are at least five others sort of in the queue, talking with us and eager to get started. The University of California, Irvine, is exploring this as they have their own police department. And so this has really started something of a movement.
I, and we're hearing about this at the state level now. You hear about the governor talking about mobile crisis units. And San Diego County has implemented mobile crisis units. And so, you know, it's, it's very much what the mayor was saying. You know, a few years ago, we were talking about erasing the stigma and doing a lot of work around that. And now we've just really launched into this new, you know, as you said, COVID really showed a light on everything that's happening and how important mental health is. And the stories that we've heard from the residents. Everything from seniors suffering from isolation to teenagers contemplating suicide. This is not just for the unhoused, it's for everybody in Huntington Beach. And I think that, as you mentioned, just the number of calls that we've been able to divert from our police department to social workers and medical professionals to address these issues. It's just, I think, you know, we were all very nervous when we had to come up with the money for it. But I'm also grateful to Senator Feinstein and Senator Padilla for giving us a $500,000 grant so that we could purchase the vans. And then just recently, Assemblywoman Cottie Petry-Norris rewarded the city with another $1.5 million to continue this good work. So, you know, again, it was a risk, but it's paying off. And I think that, you know, I'm just so proud that I got to be a part of this council to launch this program. So I know you say thank you to us, but really, thank you so much, Marshall, for bringing this idea to us.
Thank you.
Ms. Moser?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to also really concur with everything that Councilmember Carr said. Specifically, you know, the, being the first is challenging sometimes. I think it does take courage, but it also takes other people who have the idea, the big idea, but also providing that stone soup of everybody working together like you talked about. And also, it does require and also encourage funding, right? Because people will often talk about the fact that this shouldn't really be the city's responsibility. And I think that in lieu of that, what we've seen is, it's not that it's our financial responsibility, but it is our responsibility to make sure that our residents have a good quality of life and that this is where there was definitely a gap. And also, from a public safety standpoint, like you talked about optimizing our police and our EMS going out, this also assists with that and really acts as a support for our public safety professionals that are out there every day. I also, I did want to thank, you know, you for always fighting for what's needed in all of our communities. I know that the mobile crisis response is just a piece of, of the whole model and also all of your work with Mind OC. I mean, it's, it should really all be applauded. There's such a, a gap in all of the beds that are available and for mental health services and just all of it. And so I applaud you for always being passionate and working no matter what to keep moving that ball forward and partnering with people because that's how you approach everything. But I also wanted to just throw a shout out into, of course, Chief Habberly, who's still here with us. Yay. Also, our former chief Harvey for being really just such a great supporter and proponent of this. And I think still is as well, as well as our former city manager, Oliver Chi, too. Because it really took a lot of people who were brave enough to be able to get everybody else on board and to get this going. And I have also seen and heard many stories from people around town who have had personal experiences with, with the van and with the people. They really, and you know, I've worked directly with Romero, and you know, they really work to, their heart is in it. And it's very much appreciated. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, unless you have anything else you want to broadcast to us?
The only thing I would say is ending on that, thank you again. And for those of you that, that know Jason and have a chance to connect with him through Jason, it'd be great if you had a chance to, to meet Michael Romero. He's sitting over there. He's the supervisor of the team in the city, and you'll never meet a more passionate guy.
Agreed.
Thanks, Michael. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move on to, let's see, city clerk, please introduce your report.
Yes, I have a very brief presentation here. Today is the 10-year anniversary of the National Voter Registration Day. And just want to let anybody know, if they want to register for this year's general municipal election on Tuesday, November 8th, they can visit www-registertovote.ca.gov. And they need to do it by October 24th. And also, now they have pre-registration for eligible California youth ages 16 or 17, if they want to pre-register. When they turn 18, they'll automatically be eligible to vote. Next slide. And as an important reminder for all Huntington Beach registered voters, there's several ways to vote. You will get your ballot in the mail, which will come with a prepaid postage-paid envelope. Or you can drop your ballot in any drop box anywhere in Orange County. And there's one right out front here in Civic Center. Or you can deliver it to any vote center in the county. That's going to be open beginning October 29th through November 8th. And if you do mail your ballot in, make sure it is postmarked no later than Election Day, November 8th. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. We are now going to move on. We are now going to move on to the consent counter, items 15 through 24. Anyone would like to pull an item? If not, I do appreciate a motion in a second. Number 19, okay. Anybody else? Okay. Other than that, may I have a motion in a second to move forward?
I'll move the balance. I'll second it.
So, Ms. Carr, motion first, and then Mr. Kalmak second.
Oh, is he off? He's off?
Okay. Items number 15, 16, 17, 18, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, all pass. 601 with Mayor Protem Posey absent. Thank you. Okay, then. Item number 19, Ms. Carr?
Thank you. Item 19 is in response to the grand jury's report regarding how is Orange County addressing homelessness. And I think this dovetails nicely in with what we were just talking about, Be Well. And I wanted our residents just to be aware, you know, our mayor wrote an amazing letter, an amazing four-page letter detailing all of the things that our city is doing to address homelessness. And I think that this is really important for our residents to know, and that the Orange County jury report was somewhat critical of South County cities for not doing their fair share. However, our city is really, again, being very forward-thinking and doing innovative projects that a lot of cities have not even considered doing. And so, I just wanted to highlight some of the elements that our mayor pointed out in the letter as far as opening up the navigation center and having 95 participants transfer into permanent housing. And you think about that, almost 100 people, and the shelter's only been open, what, less than two years? The concept, as we talked about with the Be Well Mobile Crisis Units and everything that that has done, servicing almost 3,000 calls, having a homeless task force with over 4,400 contacts that our police department made in 2021, being a part of Project Home Key, which will offer 62 rooms of permanent supportive housing, being able to partner with Jamboree Housing to talk about affordable senior housing that we're moving forward with 42 units. And I think really what, and finally, as we talk about, you know, Be Well being very forward-thinking, the next iteration is a healing center. And that's also another partnership with Jamboree Housing to really address not just, you know, how do we have a navigation center? How do we have permanent supportive housing? How do we have mental health? How do we have all of these services with a healing center? And so, to me, again, it's just, it's so critical because we see the proof in the pudding. When we did the point-of-time count and we saw a 35% reduction in the unhoused here in Huntington Beach, not every city can say that. I think that's really something that LA wishes that they had. But again, it's showing everybody rowing together. It's our police department, our fire department, the city council, the residents, the businesses, the nonprofit organizations, the faith-based organizations, our residents, everybody coming together to solve something which is just, it's, as we've talked about, it's a very complicated problem. But I couldn't be more proud of the city, and thank you, Mayor, for putting that all together in a very concise, I encourage our residents to see this, because we hear it all the time that homelessness is one of the number-one issues that people are concerned about. And this city is doing phenomenal work and really on the cutting edge of what is, what I think is a model for every city to replicate. So, take the time. Thank you, Mayor, for really doing a lot of heavy lifting there. But I just really wanted to highlight for our residents, and I'm more than happy to move the item.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right. So, Ms. Carr, for motion? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you here. Go ahead.
Quick. I just wanted to say yes, thank you, Mayor, for presenting that letter with regards or response to the grand jury report. But I also really just wanted to, you know, commend Jason Austin, our Director of Homelessness and Behavioral Health Services as well. I probably messed that title up a little bit, but, but for really bringing all of his, kind of continuing all the things that we're doing, number one, and then broadening them, really working to create a system of care here, not looking at things just like that we're checking off the box. But he's really in the background, working with a team, spinning so many different plates to make sure that they all keep spinning, and also to make sure that we're really gathering all of the people that Councilmember Carr already talked about, the people and the organizations, to make sure that, you know, he's leading kind of from behind, but then also stepping forward to really gather everyone to work together as a team, whether or not they're actually part of the city of Huntington Beach municipal, municipality, but also, we're just all working together anyway, and it's hard to do that. But looking at it from this system of care, he brings that, I think, approach from the county. He knows where everything is, and that's helpful too. And so, I did just want to thank him for all of his support, I'm sure, to the mayor and also to our community as we move forward with this.
Well, thank you very much. We need to move on now to vote. Oh, I thought, okay, go ahead. I already thought I helped you, right? And we didn't have the... Councilmember Kalmak? Yeah, there we go. Motion passes 601 with Mayor Protem Posey absent. Thank you. Okay, so now we move on to item, let's see, 20, Public Hearing. So, this is a public hearing to consider the acceptance of the fiscal year 2021-2022 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Who's going to be, oh, Mr. Charles.
Good evening, Mayor Del Glaze and members of the city council, Charles Kovak, Housing Manager. This evening, I'll be presenting on the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. It's also referred to as the CAPER for the fiscal year 2021-22. The annual report describes the city's achievements and performance in implementing CDBG and home activities during the recently completed program year, which began July 1st of 2021 and ended June 30th of this year, 2022. The city must follow specific requirements to remain eligible for CDBG and home funding, including conducting a public hearing to consider the CAPER and submitting it to HUD at the conclusion of the program year. The CAPER has been prepared in a format required by HUD and serves the following purpose: ensure that the city is in compliance with all applicable rules and regulations, provide HUD information necessary for their annual report to Congress, provide the city with the opportunity to highlight some of the accomplishments, which I'll be covering shortly, including impactful services to our most at-risk residents, upgrade our community facilities, and affordable housing. As I mentioned, the city must hold a public hearing on the CAPER, and the CAPER must be submitted to HUD by September 28th. The CDBG is the principal federal program for providing local governments with grants to improve the physical, economic, and social conditions in their communities. The purpose of the program is to create and maintain decent housing and suitable living environment, and to expand economic opportunities for low and moderate-income residents. HOME is the principal federal program, providing local governments with grants for affordable housing for low and moderate-income residents. Together in Huntington Beach, these programs support these three funding categories as shown here, public services, housing, and capital projects. I'll be covering some of our accomplishments now for fiscal year 21-22. The Oakview Family Literacy Program, a sub-recipient of CDBG funds, assisted 139 low-income adults with English-as-a-second language classes and skills. These classes are offered at the Oakview Branch Library. Next is the Oakview Children's Bureau. 162 low-income children were provided with after-school recreation and education programs. For our homeless and at-risk of homelessness community, 33 people were funded specifically by 2021-22 CDBG funding, including 10 as part of the Navigation Center and 23 as part of Stand Up for Kids' Street Outreach Program. Services included information about resources, housing, education, employment, counseling, mental health, food, and clothing. Through our Senior Care Services Program, 442 seniors were provided with care management, transportation, home-delivered meals, and other quality-of-life services. Our special code enforcement program has two officers that are funded using 2021-22 CDBG funds that help address code-related issues. The city assisted 1,101 residential units, which are located in lower-income census tracts with substandard housing conditions and zoning and building code issues. Before you are some examples of before-and-after images that code enforcement addresses. Next is Public Facilities, which is part of the Capital Projects Funding category. This year, improvements consisted of the replacement of the curb cuts in Maintenance Zone 5, which will provide 2,118 disabled persons with access to streets. With a combination of CDBG and home funds, we've been able to continue our tenant-based rental assistance program. For this year, we were able to assist 22 households at risk of homelessness with tenant-based rental assistance, including veterans and victims of domestic violence. Due to high rents and low vacancies, the number of individuals assisted in 21-22 was significantly lower than past years. Therefore, as you know, approximately 391,000 home funds were unspent and will be carried over to the current 22-23 fiscal year and to be used for the recently formed Mobile Home TBRA program. Finally, through repayment of a couple of prior home loans, the city is able to use this available funding to provide a $2.8 million loan to Jamboree Housing in Home Funds for the development of the senior housing project at the corner of Beach and Main. This project is currently under construction, and when completed, will provide 43 affordable housing units to seniors, earning 30% to 50% of area median income. And this will also include some wraparound services that will support these seniors. The next step is to submit the required report to HUD by September 28th. Staff recommends that the city council receive and file the CAPER summarizing these accomplishments and authorize its submission to HUD. With that, that concludes the presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Do any of the council members have any questions?
I'll move the recommended item.
Oh, we need to open up the public hearing. Yep, so, I get to bang the gavel. I get to bang the gavel. All right. Open up the public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, we do. Allison, you want to unmute?
I'm sorry, I wasn't signed up to speak.
Oh, you had your hand raised.
I'm sorry, I was not signed up to speak. Sorry about that.
All right, no problem. Two supplemental communications for the public hearing. The first is a PowerPoint presentation that you just saw entitled Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, fiscal year 2021-22, submitted by Ursula Luna Reynosa, Director of Community Development, and email communication regarding the acceptance of the fiscal year 2021-22 CAPER.
Okay. With that, I'll go ahead and I'll close the public hearing.
Now I'll move it.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Peterson, second by Bolton.
Oh, good. This is for, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Motion passes 601, Mayor Protem, he's absent. Okay, we're going to go ahead now and do an administrative, everybody's voted, I'm just catching up where I am. Director Slama is going to be giving our staff report. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Del Glaze and city council members. Tonight's item before you is regarding recognition of Michael E. Rogers at the Senior Center in Central Park, as well as the naming of the former senior outreach building at 17th Street Park. So, there's two parts, two actions to this recommendation. So, I'll give a little bit of background about why we're here, how we got here, and then I'll take each one separately, and happy to answer any questions for the discussion So, on May 11th, 2022, Community Library Services Commission approved recommendations to city council to formally name the parkland located at 1706 Orange Avenue as the 17th Street Park, and to formally name the former outreach building as the Michael E. Rogers Clubhouse. After that, staff brought the item to the council, and the item was pulled for discussion during the council meeting on June 7th, 2022. The council did approve the naming of 17th Street Park, but after some discussion, directed staff to further evaluate recognition opportunities for Michael E. Rogers at the Senior Center in Central Park, with the possibility of considering honoring veterans at the former senior outreach building at 17th Street Park. So, following that, staff met with the, conducted a public meeting on June 22nd with the Park Naming and Memorials Committee, in which the committee toured the Senior Center in Central Park to talk about potential areas that aren't already named to recognize Michael E. Rogers. And so, there was a tour of the building in several areas. Following that meeting, the commission met on July 20th, 2022, and to conduct a study session in order to deliberate recognition opportunities for Michael E. Rogers. And so, ultimately, after that discussion, the consensus was that the central hallway, while outside of the game room, would be the best potential naming opportunity due to its open visibility and a high-traffic area. And I'll show you some visuals of that in the coming slides. So, after that, on August 24th, the commission approved the recommendation to city council to formally dedicate the central hallway in recognition of Michael E. Rogers. So, I believe all of you are familiar with the layout of the Senior Center in Central Park, but this is the entryway to the game room. The hall, the wall to the right is the central hallway wall that's being proposed to honor Michael E. Rogers. It's a thorough, fair area to all places in the senior center, which gets about 500 visitors a day. And just some action photos from the game room, it is very highly activated. Michael E. Rogers was very known for supporting active aging throughout the community. And this is just a couple of different angles, some viewpoints to that central hallway. The picture on the left is from the main lobby, the entry lobby into the senior center, where the front desk is. Again, over 500 visitors a day. That area is very viewable from the lobby, as well as coming the other direction from the main parkview room and lounge area. And this is the adjacent Evergreen donor wall in the same hallway, and this is sponsored by the Huntington Beach Council on Aging. It honors the donors that help provide year after year to support programs and services within the senior center in Central Park. So, you can see the design that was done and the acrylic features there of the plaques. And so, what staff discussed and recommended is if the commission and if council would like to approve the recommended action, directly on the other side of the wall, there would be some synergy there in the design, we would work with an artist to basically match sort of that acrylic layout and materials of the adjacent wall and properly honor Michael E. Rogers. So, this is a rendering, and not exactly to scale, but... So this is a rendering, and not exactly to scale, but an example of how we could recognize Mr. Rogers with a photo that has been preserved for many years that we still have, as well as some content that would be adjacent to it that would recognize his efforts and his humanitarian advocacy over the years. So the first part, and again, I'll go through the next one, but the first part of the action is to approve to formally dedicate the central hallway wall at the Senior Center in Central Park in recognition of Michael E. Rogers. So if that is to be approved, staff would then follow the appropriate steps for final plaques and the historical content that would be included in that. And the second part of tonight's recommended action is the naming of the former Senior Outreach Building, which is at 1718 Orange Avenue in this visual here, which is actually very exciting. This is a photo of the site, the construction site, as of last week. You can see the park is coming along very well, and you see the building at 1718 Orange down to the lower right, which is on the corner of 18th and Orange Avenue. So just a little refresher on the park layout, it's about 2.13 total acres, 13 parking stalls, and the building is about 2,600 square feet. And here's just an overlay of the building layout and how it's been designed. Again, it's undergoing all interior improvements, new furnishings and fixtures, as well as outdoor paint, roof, et cetera. So it's going to be a brand-new, improved building. And you can see they have two meeting spaces there, which will be open to the public for community meetings and rentals, similar to our other clubhouses throughout the city. But as previously discussed and directed here at City Council, is providing a regular meeting space for the American Legion Post 133, as well as some designated storage and office space for them as well. So we've been reaching out to them, and we'll be meeting soon about when it is time to open that center, what that partnership looks like moving forward. So at the same commission meeting on July 20, staff also provided commission information and options regarding the naming of this building. Based on previous City Council discussion regarding referencing recognition of veterans, some different options for naming were put out and discussed amongst the commissioners. And you can see listed there are some of the ideas that were put out there for discussion. And staff also presented that a memorial hall previously existed in Huntington Beach, and from 1923 to 1974 was the first home to the American Legion Post 133. The Legion was the main resident and manager of the second floor of that building, while the first floor was used for various general community gatherings, similar to how it will function in the near future. I want to also mention that I do have the Chair of our Historic Resources Board and City Archivist Kathy Shay on the line in case there are any specific historical questions, and also want to take the opportunity to thank her greatly for her support and her information as we've gone through this process. So again, during the discussion later, if there's any historical questions, she's going to help out. So ultimately, commission reached a consensus that that study session, that including the word "community" in the name, would properly reflect the multiple uses of the building and avoid confusion. So some of the discussion was, would only involving memorial or veterans insinuate that it's exclusively used by the American Legion Post 133? So then, again, ultimately, the discussion narrowed down to two choices for staff to come back with an action item. One was Memorial Community Hall and the other Veterans Community Hall. And then staff brought that back to commission as an action item and recommendation for those two choices. There were some public comments, same as tonight, as we heard from members of the American Legion Post 133 advocating for the name to be Memorial Hall, suggestive of its previous name historically. And there were residents also advocating for the recommended action of Memorial Community Hall. And with a 7-2 vote, the commission approved to recommend City Council formally name the former Senior Outreach Building as Memorial Community Hall. And this is a shot during construction as well, and actually, there have been significant upgrades since this photo. But here you see the front facing, the main entryway to the building. As you can see there, formerly the Senior Outreach Center. So this recommended action is to approve to formally name the former Senior Outreach Building at 17th Street Park as Memorial Community Hall. If that were the recommended action approved, staff would then take the next steps in manufacturing the lettering to properly name the building. And we would also work on coming up with some proper signage, plaques that recognize the history of the former building and the significance of this one, and that would all go through a process. The language will come back to City Council as well for that. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Mr. Slama, I know that you've worked on this for a very, very long time, and so has the commission. I have no issue at all with the Michael E. Rogers event or the exhibit in the Senior Center in Central Park. But I was going to make a substitute motion, and I would like to make the motion to name it Memorial Hall. And I know you've gone through that on numerous occasions, but I would like the council to speak on that, and the reason being is I've heard from a lot of veterans this summer, you know, and we kind of waited because you saw all the dates on there. You had a lot of different dates, and there was a lot of different meetings and stuff. So I don't know if anyone is interested in making a second to that, but...
I'll second that.
Okay. I'll call on everybody, but I just couldn't let this go without asking. So, and part of it is, I forgot the dates. I appreciate you putting the dates up there from 1923 to 1974. By this being called a Memorial Hall, I don't see any reason why I wouldn't be able to have an event there, or seem like it's only for seniors. I don't think we have even anything in our community that says "only." Do we? No. So anyway, I understand people saying that, but these veterans, these American Legion men and women, I don't know. I think we've promised them a hall forever, and I would just like to see it in a name that they want. So that's my motion. I have a second. I'll go ahead and call on Ms. Mosier.
Thank you. And I was actually kind of in between. I could have really gone either way. I just did want to say that I'm really glad that when it first came to us, that we sent it back to have further conversation and back to the commission and the naming committee, even though they had already done a lot of work on that and that they continue to do so. I also wanted to thank the community members and veterans for their advocacy and recommendations, and to Kathy Shay for her historical support, too. I think that the recommendation overall recognizes Michael E. Rogers at the Senior Center, which they mentioned, open visibility and high daily traffic, so it gives it an appropriate place in the Senior Center. It honors the veterans at the building. I like that it's connected historically with the past Memorial Hall, American Legion's first home, and also now the office and regular meeting location. I acknowledge the desire to add community to it, though, as well, as far as that clarification of the multiple uses. That's where I was really on the fence either way, but I do think that's really about, as far as the use of space, it's really about the story that we tell, the way that we communicate it, the advertising that we do, and the way that we talk about it. I do still, though, appreciate the naming committee. I know it was challenging, and they worked really hard to be able to try to come to a consensus about that and to honor everybody, and I think that they did. But I do think that it does honor the past with the retention of the original name of Memorial Hall.
Mr. Peterson?
I know your picture said not to scale on the Roger. That looked perfect scale to me. I mean, that looked really good, and I think better that instead of just a name that people have to look up, there's some context here, which is really nice and it's high visible. So, you know, thank you for that. I think that's great. I am supporting Memorial Hall. I think, you know, it's been, what, 48 years since it was taken down? It was the original home of the Legion, and if a lot of people don't know, ours was like the Second Legion in the United States. It's one of the oldest legions. And the reason we have Civil War Days is because Huntington was a place where Civil War vets, one in particular brought his fellow soldiers here to recover with the beach. So that's why we have Civil War Days here, because we have a connection to that. And these stories need to be told, and Memorial Hall, I don't think... I think, one, it's a place where those stories can be held and told, and we have a lot of stories from all these old guys that are there. But also, it's giving back to something we promised, because when we did demolish that building, we said, "We'll get you one eventually." And it's been almost 50 years, and I think it's time. I think by retaining that name, it just, like Ms. Mosier said, it ties it into the history of that name. So I'll be supporting the Memorial Hall.
Thank you. Ms. Carr?
Yeah, I'll never forget. One of the first meetings I had after I was elected to the City Council was with Dennis Bauer, who told me the story of how one day they were hoping to have this facility because the other one was taken away. And, you know, I, too, was like you, Natalie, I could have gone either way on this one, but I think it's also important to know that just because it doesn't have "community" in the name doesn't mean it's not for the community. And one of the biggest misnomers I think we have is the Senior Center, and that we have most of our big community events happen at the Senior Center. I know I had the Mayor's Gala there last year, so I think there is a real opportunity to continue to reach out to the community and know that this is available for everybody to use. And as the sister of a Navy veteran who retired after 21 years, I think that he would be a little upset with me if I didn't support this, and then also, my brother-in-law is a Vietnam veteran. And I think that we do need to be able to create a space for the people who have given so much to our country. So I am supportive of the Memorial Hall. I think it's the right thing to do. A promise was made, and we need to deliver on that.
Okay, then. Any other comments?
Oh, Ms. Bolton?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, if we made the promise, we need to keep the promise. I was on the fence as well, but appreciate the folks who came out tonight to let us know what their thoughts were. And, you know, the veterans have done something that, you know, we cannot thank them enough for, so if we can do this thing for them, I agree. It should be Memorial Hall. So thanks, that's it.
And thank you. No other comments? We'll go ahead and move for the vote.
Substitute motion passes 601 with Mayor Protem Posey, absent. Thank you. Okay, and then we'll move on to item number 27. Mr. Zelenka, is there a staff report?
Yes, Mayor and members of the council, this staff report is...I'll be presenting it.
Oh, great.
And then Michael Gates, City Attorney, will also answer any questions that you have, in addition to myself. We both prepared this staff report at your request.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So on...oh, I can advance myself. All right. So on, as you well know, on July 5, the Richards Watson &amp; Gershon, RWG for short, they presented an independent review of the city's handling of the Moore Field litigation. It included in their recommendations. And on August 2, City Council requested that we return with a review of those recommendations and implementation suggestions or recommendations for the council of each of those. So the first recommendation, as you are well aware, pertained to, and you can read it up there, is that we, the City Attorney's Office, should provide training to the council regarding their respective roles as attorney and client, as well as on resources of the City Attorney's Office. We spent a lot of time outlining a range of training in addition to those that were recommended in the RWG report. The City Attorney will take a lead on many of those trainings, but will be supplemented by the City Manager, City Clerk, and Treasurer regarding their respective roles and some other supplemental training that we've recommended. We anticipate beginning in January and continuing through 2023, and just starting a new cycle of training so that the council will always be apprised of policies and procedures, laws, et cetera, that will help it do its work on behalf of the public. After the first year of training, then, in general, it'll be a biennial cycle, but that will be adapted to address newly-elected officials. So as one part of the syllabus that you asked us to come back on, we identified around 10, 10 or 12 required trainings that we thought would be beneficial for the council to have, and those were...a proposed cadence was presented in a timeline from January through June of the year, with then some supplemental trainings that would occur either concurrent or subsequent to the required trainings. And we anticipate that some of the trainings will be formatted as standalone, some may be individual in nature, some would be a study session of the council in format, but we will get into great detail of the trainings and bring it back to this council so that you can better appreciate what we're envisioning. And there's some of the supplemental trainings as well. In addition to the required supplemental trainings as kind of the implementation of the first recommendation, there was a second recommendation, which was to determine if the city should take actions concerning potential violations of the Government Code, Sections 87, 407, and 1090 by former employee Brian Williams. That was a recommendation of the RWG report. The City Attorney and I identified kind of a three-point implementation step, which the third point is missing up there, which I will identify, but essentially, the City Attorney will commission the independent counsel from the newly-procured panel of law firms from the RFP that the City Attorney issued to analyze and make recommendation regarding these potential violations. The independent counsel will work with the City Attorney and myself to implement the recommendation, and in the event that the independent counsel recommends legal action, there will be direct consultation with the City Council, City Attorney, City Manager in closed session. Third, evaluate the possibility of seeking reimbursement for some or all payments. Oh, and I should back up and say that for the recommendation number two, we discuss the ability to, with the council's direction, to bring on a independent counsel from that new panel that the City Attorney's Office has procured within a week or so, and then carry out that recommendation within about 30 days or so. Recommendation number three would be to evaluate the possibility of seeking reimbursement for some or all payments made at Greenberg Gross following Brian Williams' employment with that firm. This should include payment for researching conflict of interest and travel expenses. That was the third RWG recommendation. The implementation, as you can see, is that, again, the City Attorney will draw from the newly-procured panel to review the appropriateness of Greenberg Gross fees, as well as payments made by the city of the firm. In conversations with the City Attorney, that independent counsel could be identified within about a week, following your direction. The work would probably take somewhere in the range of 60 or 90 days for that independent counsel to do their analysis of the receiv- counsel to do their analysis of the receipts and other documents related to Greenberg Gross's work. So if appropriate, the panel, the recommendation would seek reimbursement of those fees. And if the council identifies legal action, there would be direct consultation, again, with the city council in closed session. With all of that, the recommendation that the city attorney and I have for you is to consider and approve the plan for implementation regarding the three recommendations provided in RWG's independent review of the city's handling of the Moore Field litigation matter. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you. City Attorney, did you have anything else to add?
No, I think you did a good job.
Okay. Excuse me, there's, Ms. Bolton?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions about the staff recommendation. I just want to make sure I understand it. So with respect to number one, I don't have any questions other than for the supplemental trainings. So we have December. So that's December when the new council is sworn in, right? So those would be the first trainings that the new council members would go through? So?
Ideally, yes.
Roberts?
Yeah, ideally, yes. Yep.
Okay. And then with respect to recommendations two and three, I have the same question. So the language says the independent counsel will work with the city attorney and the city manager to implement this recommendation. So I want to make sure I understand what you mean by that. So who, I guess, can you walk me through what this process is going to be like? So you said that you have a list that's been derived from an RFP, right? So those are the approved firms, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, so then what happens after that?
So we reach out to attorneys from the firms to see if they can take the case, if they're interested in taking the case, if they're willing to take the case. And then, once they've agreed, we present the issue to them and have them go off and do their research. And then at some point later, they come back with a recommendation. And when they do, Al and I get on the phone and hear what they have to say, or receive a written report, whatever it is. And then depending on that, then, you know, there may be cause to go into closed session to discuss further action with the council, or, you know, any number of things. I guess at that point, we wouldn't know until we know what their findings are, his or her findings are. So, but with an independent review, we just present the issue, let them go off and do their work. If they request documents or request further materials, we provide those. And then they come back with a final report.
So the city attorney's office would still have oversight of this process?
Well, whenever we request an independent review, we basically say that we're not involved. So there's, so we wouldn't have oversight, per se. But what we would say is, when we speak to counsel, outside counsel, we will say, "When you're ready, let us know." And when they say they're ready, then I would make sure that Al and I were there at the same time. Like I said, whether it's a written report, or phone call, whatever, whatever the case may be. So I wouldn't use the word oversight, per se. We're commissioning them to do something. They go off and do it, and then they come back and say, "Here's our findings."
Well, because the subject matter was an issue where the city attorney's office was recused previously, you can see why I'm asking the question, and this is what my concern is. I just want to make sure that there is no, you know, that nobody can make the allegation that there's any partiality in the way that this is done. And so my suggestion is that however this is carried out, and however you characterize the role of the city attorney's office, whether it's recusal or what have you, that we just make sure that there's no, you know, suggestion that there's any partiality. So when the independent counsel comes back with their report, does that report, is the plan for the report to come to the city council? Or is there going to be some type of review? And, you know, we wouldn't potentially see the report directly from the independent counsel? Because I think we should see it directly from the independent counsel.
And I think, really, in all cases, I can't imagine a situation where that wouldn't be shared with you. The only thing is what forum? If it's something that might require, that might contemplate potential litigation, then obviously that would be shared as a closed session item. But if, for instance, it has nothing to do with anticipated litigation or potential litigation, then I think it could be communicated outside of closed session. So it kind of depends on what's in the findings, and what the recommendation is.
Mr. Zelenka?
Yeah, so it sounds like, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like it would be shared. It's just how it would be shared, whether it's in closed session or, yeah.
I have a question. What about to Ms. Bolton's question? Suppose something arises and it infers hue, then what do we do?
Like I'm implicated in wrongdoing?
Could happen, I don't know.
Well, the, it's hard to imagine the scenario that that would occur based on what is being asked for. If we're looking at the Mr. Williams and his alleged 1090 violations. And then the invoicing, I never saw an invoice for number three, you know, so.
Let me rephrase it. So I'm not, because I don't, I'm not trying to, what I'm trying to do is be specific. Let's say there's something that shows up. I don't, I can't even, I don't know what it would be. But somehow, by researching Mr. Williams, there's something revealed, then what do we do? I mean, because what I think Ms. Bolton is speaking to is, if you're doing that, you're reviewing what was suggested to you.
No, I want to be clear, because I don't want some intimation of some mishandling.
Right.
The, an independent attorney, and this happens all the time. This is not something that we're making up on the fly here.
Oh, no, no, I know you have independent attorneys.
We hire outside counsel, and we say, "This is your charge." And they go off and do it. And then we say that when you are reporting to us, you come back and you report to us. And that includes Mr. Zelenka and myself. So it's, I think it's patent that, you know, there, it would be reported. And if hypothetically, it's hard to imagine a scenario where it would be the case based on the charge that's being presented. If I have an issue, I would obviously recuse, like completely bow out, and then let Mr. Zelenka handle it at the time. But, you know, what I don't want to do is go down this path of like all these what-ifs, when, you know, based on this situation, and these types of situations are not unfamiliar to me, it's hard to imagine a situation that would arise. If it did, we would deal with it at the time.
Okay. Ms. Moser?
You had just mentioned that it's common to hire outside counsel. You do it all the time. But I guess what's uncommon in this case is that your office is the one involved in the, not investigation, it's not the right language, but.
Well, yeah, no, understood. It's not uncommon to, for an attorney's office, even a city attorney's office, to hire outside counsel for an independent review, even if the in-house counsel is involved in something. That's not uncommon at all. In fact, one of the early letters that was sent to counsel by that law firm, Cole Huber, I believe, outlined how it's completely possible to hire independent counsel. And I can send it to you again. But basically, in that letter, when he was making the case that city council didn't need to go to Richards Watson for a review, because it's possible to get an independent review through the city attorney's office, he laid it all out in like an eight-page letter. So.
I'm going to make a suggestion that the city attorney's office be recused, and that we use the word "recused." Because I just, I just don't want to go down this path again, where we're, you know, going back and forth about the involvement of that office in something that, you know, we're talking about a review, we're still dealing with the review of what happened within the office. And it's not, you know, personal to you. But I just think that the best practice is for the city attorney's office to be recused. I mean, so we have selection of the independent counsel. But at that point, my suggestion is going to be that the city attorney's office be recused, and that we, you know, just go forward, and we get, Mr. Zelenka gets the report, and then, you know, the report is shared with the city council. And if we need to meet with that independent counsel in closed session, then that's what we should do.
Well, what we're trying to do is walk a fine line between getting an independent review and also honoring the charter and my charge as the elected city attorney. When, you know, for instance, in a very recent case where outside counsel was required to represent the clerk in a challenge regarding an elections issue, I contacted the attorney, and I said, you know, "I'm recused, I'm not involved." And I alerted Mr. Zelenka what was happening. And I wasn't involved, the attorneys handled it, but I was still involved to the extent I commissioned outside counsel. So, and these things, you know, what I don't particularly understand is, none of these present a conflict of interest. Now, one could argue that, "Well, you knew Mr. Williams." Well, yeah, okay, but the last time I spoke to him was when he resigned, right? Like, so, but that, the fact that I knew him in the past doesn't present a conflict of interest, which is what's required, or usually typically the basis for a recusal. So I'm perfectly willing to, when we hire outside counsel, to say, "Hey, look, I'm not involved, here's your charge, go off and do your work, and then come back and report when you're done." But to completely step aside and not be involved at all, not retain them, not, I mean, that's not even necessary, it's not required under the law.
I'm not suggesting that you don't retain them. What I'm suggesting is, after that, my recommendation would be to just take a step back. I mean, Mr. Williams was employed by the city attorney's office. I guess there's, there could be a theory of vicarious liability or something like that. I don't know. The point of having the independent review is to come in and tell us, "Okay, so, you know, here's what the situation is." And it just, I would rather us just do it cleanly at the outset. Heaven forbid, you know, something happens down the road, let's just do it cleanly at the outset. And, you know, I think it'll, we can get it done a lot more efficiently if we just go ahead and say that the city attorney's office handled the hiring of the independent counsel, the city attorney's office will be recused, let them come back. So that's going to be my recommendation, and that's going to be my motion for items, recommendations, number two and number three from the staff.
Can I make a friendly amendment to your motion? I would also suggest that the scope of work be dictated by the city manager and not the city attorney.
Okay. Agree to that amendment. So as amended, as suggested by Councilmember Carr.
I'll second that amendment, I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Kalmick?
Thank you. So I'll start off the easy stuff first. So item number one is wonderful. I appreciate that greatly. Likely, we're, I mean, we'll have four new faces up here in a couple of months. Some, you know, looking at the pool, there's a lot of folks that have never served in municipal government before, and so I think having a lot of these things set off at the beginning are great. I know when I joined, there's a couple of things that were just assumed that you knew how to do, and you're just like, "Yeah, huh, totally, no, that's exactly what this is, I get it," and then go home and read the manual. What I'm really also interested in the supplemental trainings, I think those are wonderful. ICS training, seems kind of obscure, but I've taken both ICS 100 and 200 when I was a volunteer firefighter. It gives you a really good view of how large-scale incidents work, understanding the language, why things are done that way. I mean, it's not, ICS 100 is not a full, yeah, it's an easy, it's an easy thing, but it gives you a really good context. So I think that's amazing that that got dropped in there. And the cybersecurity training, obviously, that's wonderful, you know, one email away from taking everything down. I would like to add into that some computer skills training. Not everybody, there's, not everybody's savvy on this, and the only requirement to become a council member is being a registered voter in the city of Huntington Beach. And so we don't know people's backgrounds or technology backgrounds, and we do rely on technology heavily, so to jump folks in and be like, "Yes, of course you know how to use Outlook and iPhone and all the advanced features on that, meeting scheduling, all of that, so that we can be efficient as we schedule meetings." And so just given some basic seals, don't assume everybody knows how to use all these things. My day job is not assuming that everyone knows how to use all these things. So then coming into option number two and three, I think Councilmember Bolton, I think, framed this appropriately. You know, Mr. Gates, you were looking for some hypotheticals in there. So I think Mr. Field created, didn't create a hypothetical, stated that the implication that both you and Mr. Vigliotti knew of the potential 1090 violation, and the only way we found out about it was the Richard Watkins and Gershon report, that Brian Williams left the city after increasing the amount that his new firm was going to pay him, and, you know, the FPPC is investigating that. So, I mean, there's an open investigation, they didn't just dismiss it as nothing. You know, we'll find out in however long the FPPC takes. But, you know, I think that having, as I said, Councilmember Bolton stated, that having this clean separation here of identifying what that scope of work is based on council direction, and then handing it off, we've selected, you know, the attorney, the firm is, I think, within the realm of the charter, and then comes back to the council. The council is in control of all legal affairs of the city, as stated. And then the case you brought up, that just happened with regard to the city clerk, I still have a lot of questions about how that was handled, because the, there's, no one's quite clear as who stood up for the city at that, at the hearing, at the second hearing. I asked the city clerk, I got different answers from both the deputy city clerk and the city clerk, talked to the city manager, and saw the order, and there's no, the city of Huntington Beach doesn't appear on that. So it's confusing, and we're going to have a meeting about that in the future, I think. But, again, it's really defining to understand the rules here, that if we want this outside investigation, we want, I want, again, if Mr. Williams self-doubled out, like, I want to know that that, if that happened, and if we need to go to court about it, in addition to the FPPC side, and if any other organizations need to be involved in that. I don't know, but I need someone to tell me that who was, could not be potentially, you know, again, I don't know if there's other implications of knowing someone is doing that. I know that as part of the report, there's an email sent from Mr. Vigliotti to Brian Williams, telling him, "Hey, this is a 1090 violation, and here's the code." And then we got billed for him researching whether or not it was a violation of conflict of interest code. So it's not like nobody knew about this, but it wasn't brought to the council's attention as far as I'm aware. So I would definitely agree that the city manager tasked the outside counsel, after that counsel has been selected, to keep that firewall in place in case anything does blow back, because we don't know. In addition, for recommendation three, I know that the RWG did go out and hire someone to audit billing, so I hope that we can provide that work product, so we're not doubling up on work product. Obviously, we don't want to spend as much money as we could potentially get back. And I do understand that likely number three would come potentially after item number two, but, again, we want to just task everyone to do that. But, again, that clean break is there. A question, though, newly procured panel is mentioned here specifically, and it kind of struck something. Was that just, we did a new RFP for the year, and we got a whole new panel of attorneys?
Yeah, we usually do them every five to seven years, so.
And it's just happened, we just happened coincidentally?
Yeah, all the, yeah, all the, the previous panel was stale, and the previous panel before that gets stale, and so you just update. You get updated rates, you get updated personnel with the firms, you just, you just keep it fresh and updated.
Sure. So how much did that list change between the new one and the old one?
I think there's about 12 firms on there, and I think it's probably 60 to 80% new.
Oh, wow. Okay. Did the RFP change from five years ago, or last time we did it, to now?
You're just updating small language.
Okay, but like it didn't substantiate, like the scope or anything?
No, no, no.
Didn't substantially change? Okay, all right. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Okay, and then I think it was, sorry, just close that. Ms. Moser?
Nothing great to add, really just a question as far as the training is concerned. Would all council members be able to be a part of all the training? Because I hope we would all start on the same baseline together.
That would be the expectation. There may be some basics for onboarding new council members that we didn't list out here, but you would, the existing council members would get all the same materials and be invited for the training as well. But, yeah, we want everyone to be trained equally. Yep. Yep.
Anybody else? All right, then I will please have a motion, and, oh, okay, could you, it doesn't end it, okay, great. Rhonda, oh, you got it now, so, very good. So go ahead and vote. Rhonda was the, Ms. Bolton was the mover, and Mr. Kalmick second. So it was, okay. Okay, so the amended motion, it passes 511. Councilmember Peterson voting no, and Mayor Protem absent. And just so I would like to clarify for the record, recommended action number one was amended to add the computer training, right?
Yes.
And then recommended action number two is amended to, city attorney's going to retain the council, and then recuse himself, city manager's going, they're going to do the scope of work, and the city manager will give the report to council. Is that correct? All right. Thank you. Okay. Go ahead with council member comments. Okay, then, if you would please just take a minute with me, I'm going to adjourn the meeting in memory of Robert L. Mayer, Sr. For those of you out there who may not know, but Mr. Mayer, Sr., passed away earlier this month at the age of 96. Mr. Mayer was one of the Southwest's leading real estate developers as a founder and the chairman of the Robert Mayer Corporation in Newport Beach, California. He was born in Madison, Wisconsin, and relocated as a youngster to Huntington Park, California. After serving in the Army Air Corps during World War II, Bob found work in a booming house construction industry in Southern California. Starting as a day laborer, a dollar an hour, he eventually became CEO of a major apartment building, builder in Los Angeles area. His ultimate project came when he had the vision to acquire the rights to develop an extraordinary 50-acre parcel along Huntington Beach's famous coastline. He was such a trailblazer for our city with his vision, he really helped shape what Surf City is today. A few highlights of just how amazing and giving he was. 1975, he developed the waterfront resort master plan, which includes the Hilton and the Hyatt Hotels and the waterfront residential. 1982, he helped rebuild the Huntington Beach Pier project with financial support. He founded and supports the Robert Mayer Leadership Academy, which has shaped many of the community leaders, including me. Provided building funding for the Robert Mayer Child Development Preschool on Golden West College campus. Supported the Boys and Girls Club over the past 30 years, including a $2 million challenge in 2019. Funded one HB initiative to support downtown Huntington Beach businesses during the pandemic of 2020. Supported the Waymakers View Shelter in Central Park. And provided funding for the city's Fourth of July's fireworks show last year and this year. The man was absolutely everywhere and put a touch on the city that will be everlasting. I was fortunate to personally know him, and I know many of you did as well. I think his contributions will live on for a very, very long time. I just want to say a special thank you to his family, RJ and his children. We really appreciate your commitment and dedication to the city of Huntington Beach. We will miss, and we will send our deepest condolences to his three children, Linda, RJ, and Michael, and numerous grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and great-great-grandchildren. Thank you, and we'll be adjourned for the evening, and our next regularly scheduled meeting of the Huntington Beach City Council Public Finance Authority will be Tuesday, October 4th, at 4:00 p.m. here in the Civic Center. Be well, stay safe.